Okay, it's six o'clock and welcome to the September 5th meeting of the governing body. I call this meeting to order. If you will give your attention to Councilwoman Valdivia Akala, who will provide the invocation, stand as you are able and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be reading a short poem tonight from the iconic American poet Mary Oliver, who lived from 1935 to 2019. This short poem is entitled "Praying." It doesn't have to be "The Blue Iris." It could be weeds in a vacant lot, or a few small stones. Just pay attention, then patch a few words together, and don't try to make them elaborate. This isn't a contest, but the doorway into thanks and the silence in which another voice may speak.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Padilla.
Here.
Councilmembers Hiller.
Here.
Valdivia Akala.
Here.
Ortiz.
Here.
Emerson.
Kell.
Here.
Nagar.
Here.
Dobler.
Here.
Duncan.
Here.
And Hofer.
Here.
We have nine present.
Okay, move on to Agenda Item Number Two, Proclamation. Step forward here and... Mrs. Biden, is this our... How you doing? Good. Good to see you. Okay, this evening, it's my privilege to read this proclamation on behalf of the work that's being done here in the city of Topeka to address some of the issues that some of our residents experience. So, proclamation by the mayor. Whereas mental and substance use disorders, including co-occurring disorders, affect all communities nationwide, but with commitment and support, people with these disorders can achieve healthy lifestyles and lead rewarding lives in recovery. By seeking help, they can embark on a new path toward improved health and overall wellness. The focus of National Recovery Month is to celebrate their journey and spreads the message that treatment is effective and people can and do recover each and every day. Whereas the impact of mental and substance use disorders and co-occurring disorders are apparent in our local community, and 178,250 estimated people in Shawnee County are affected by these conditions. And whereas through Recovery Month, people become more aware and able to recognize the signs of mental and substance use disorders and co-occurring disorders, and encourages people in need of treatment and recovery services to seek help. And whereas managing the effects of these conditions helps individuals achieve healthy lifestyles, both physically and emotionally, and whereas the Recovery Month observance continues to work to improve the lives of those affected by mental and substance use disorders and co-occurring disorders by raising awareness of these disorders and educating communities about the effective treatment and recovery services that are available. Now therefore, I, Mayor Michael A. Padilla, Mayor of the City of Topeka, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2023 as National Recovery Month. I call upon our community to observe and join us in supporting and celebrating this September as National Recovery Month. In witness whereof, I, Michael A. Padilla, Mayor of the City of Topeka, Kansas, do hereby affix my official signature and the official seal of the City of Topeka, Kansas, on this fifth day of September 2023. And Melissa Goodman and David Ayano? Ayano? Okay, I want to make sure. If either of you would like to make comment, I'll present you with this.
I just want to celebrate and applaud everyone who is in recovery. It is not easy, and we are here as community partners. There are so many people in this room who are amazing and dedicate their lives. We do believe people can change. We see that each and every day, and so thank you. Thank you for this acknowledgement.
You're welcome. Thank you very much. Thank you for your... If you'll read, Brenda.
A is a board appointment recommending the appointment of Mark Zellinger to the Topeka Shawnee County Public Library Board of Trustees for a term ending April 30, 2027.
Okay, you heard the appointment is read. Is there a motion to approve? Motion to approve by Councilwoman Kell, second. Deputy Mayor Dobler, if you'll call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Duncan.
Yes.
Hofer.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Valdivia Akala.
Yes.
Ortiz.
Yes.
Kell.
Yes.
Nagar.
Yes.
And Dobler.
Yes.
We have eight yes. Motion carries.
Okay. Motion being carried, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Four, Presentations. Mr. City Manager.
This presentation will be given to you by Chief Randy Phillips, and it is a fire department update in relation to the hot weather we've had and what the department has experienced.
Good evening. At the request of Councilwoman Valdivia Akala, I'm here to provide you with information regarding requests for service related to the recent heat waves that we have experienced. In an effort to capture the relevant data, we looked at our run numbers over the entire month of August. TFD units responded to just over 1,300 medical calls for the month, with 42 of those coded as a heat-related emergency. Please understand that this number is probably low for the actual number of calls related to the heat, but this is not unexpected. Within our reporting system, calls are coded by the primary issue... Oh, sorry. Calls are coded by the primary issue that was presented to the responding personnel when they make contact with a patient. As an example, if a patient is diabetic and is having an issue with low blood sugar when we arrive, that would be coded as a diabetic emergency in the report, even though the elevated temperatures may have contributed to the issue as well. This is just one of many examples where a medical emergency responded to may have been related to elevated temperatures but not coded as a heat-related emergency. Additionally, over the month of August, TFD responded to 15 working structure fires, tin grass or brush fires, and another 30 outside rubbish fires. These are all instances where our personnel were working in extreme heat while wearing their firefighting gear. This takes a considerable toll physically on our personnel. We work and train to perform in all types of conditions, and the safety of our personnel is of the highest priority for us. Our company and chief officers do a good job of watching for signs of heat stress in our personnel on scenes, and we will rotate additional companies through working structure fires to help reduce the total amount of time any one company is operating at a fire. We will also watch scheduling with training activities and other duties when we see extreme temperatures so that we are not needlessly exposing our personnel for additional periods of time. It is important to remember that good physical conditioning and acclimation to the conditions helps our personnel adapt during these extreme weather conditions. I think it's also important to note that we have city employees from multiple departments that work in these conditions every day as well. City employees understand the importance of the services we provide to the community and that we take great pride in meeting those needs regardless of the conditions.
Thank you, Chief. Councilwoman Valdivia Akala.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief. Part of the reason we're asking for the presentation was not only with firefighters, who we know have to wear an inordinate amount of, you know, equipment if they're going in to deal with a fire, and we know that so many city staff are having to deal with the very high temperatures that work outdoors. It was also trying to get a snapshot, perhaps, to see if there had been an increase in calls during this time for heat-related issues. As we come into these pockets of very extreme, you know, weather, and yet I'm talking about heat here, I was wanting to see if you were being able to see any increase in call volume. It sounds to me, though, that there may be, I don't know if glitch would be the right word to use or not, but there may be some challenges in actually getting, you know, the best data because something may rank higher, like a diabetes-related call, than the underlying issue that it may have been heat-related. So I guess my question to you would be, when those calls come in and they're registered as however they're registered, is that done by, you know, 911, the call center, or how is it determined what type of call, and is there the capacity for any kind of secondary type, especially if it has to do with changes that we're seeing with extreme temperatures, and it could be coded as such?
So I think the question has some multiple layers to it. It starts with the information that's provided to the 911 dispatcher. When the individual calls in with the request for help, they go through a certified run-card system that, based on the responses that are given to them, is how the call gets coded. So if the more accurate the information is that the 911 dispatcher is given, the more accurately the call is going to be coded out to us when we initially respond. I think it's also important to remember that in our role as EMTs, we do not diagnose. We treat signs and symptoms by the nature of our certification. So that goes back to, as I said, how we code the call when we do the run report afterwards is based on the signs and symptoms that we treated. As far as determining an underlying cause or what may be the root issue, that's more of a medical issue that would be handled at the hospital by the emergency room staff. So as far as trying to get a true accurate picture of increases or fluctuations we see in these types of weather conditions, probably the hospitals would be a better source of information than our run statistics.
Then, Mayor, if I may, then that is certainly something that I will look into for consideration because I think that it's important, especially as we have an older population, it's a lot of people that work outside, children, all of that, to do our due diligence as a city to try to get accurate numbers as we can, to see how these extreme levels of weather are impacting our citizens. And I know here it says one layer out of many, which is very evident, you know, tonight, but I do want to say I appreciate you making the report. I'll be doing additional, kind of digging into this later, and hope that all the guys and gals that continue to fight the fires that just seem to be plaguing this city, you know, just get all the care that they need as city employees doing a very important job, as all of our folks in the city do. Thank you, Mayor.
Deputy Mayor Dobler.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure this is appropriate time, but I'd like to ask the chief just a few questions that somewhat relate to this. Chief, I know these calls that you talked about this week, ultimately, a number of those calls result in an ambulance being called, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
To transport the patient.
Yes, sir.
To a hospital. I've had several conversations with the chief over the last, gosh, couple of years, really. I've been concerned about the level of service that we have in this community when it comes to transport, and, you know, as we look back at the budget, I believe you're asking to increase maybe six or so advanced life support folks in your budget, or at least that's the target, I think. We're at 21 advanced life support, and you're looking to go to 27. So I guess the bottom line is, we're looking at increasing our budget to increase the quality of medical service that folks get when a firefighter shows up. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Do we get paid for that? Is there any insurance reimbursement?
No, as we're not the transporting agency, we do not receive reimbursement.
So AMR gets paid?
Yes.
We don't? I just looked at four counties around here, and chief was able to give me some information. I don't know if this is totally accurate, but I think it's pretty close. So Wyandotte County, which is actually smaller than Shawnee County, surprisingly, has nine units operating 24/7. Douglas County has seven ambulances operating 24/7. Riley County has five. Chief, do you know how many we have on a regular basis?
Unfortunately, no. I cannot tell you on a day-to-day, hour-to-hour basis how many units that AMR has on the street.
Is it safe to say it's somewhere around four or five?
I think that's probably a fair average, but I don't want to speak out of turn without them being able to speak for their own staffing model.
I get it. Let's assume it's five. If that's the case, that's one ambulance for every 35,000 people in Shawnee County. I'm talking about Shawnee County because it's a county-wide operation that serves the city of Topeka as well. One ambulance for every 35,000 people. Wyandotte County, one ambulance for every 18,000. Douglas County, one ambulance for every 17,000. Riley County, one ambulance for every 14,000. My point here is, I think it's time we take a look at the service we're receiving in the city of Topeka. I would assume the commissioners would like to look at the service the county's receiving as well. And I think budget time's an appropriate time to look at that because if we're going to do something different, not that we're necessarily going to do anything this year, but it's time to start talking about it. And as we pay more money to train our firefighters, Chief, I'm going to put you on the spot again. Does every ambulance that show up have advanced life support personnel onboard?
No, currently, they run a mixed staffing model where they have some BLS staff units and some ALS staffed units.
And every firefighter is BLS? Is that correct?
Yes, that's a condition of employment.
Okay. And we're now supplying a number of advanced life support personnel?
Yes, and it is our goal to continue to try and train up more of our personnel we already have to the ALS level, to where we can eventually provide ALS-level care across the entire city.
Very good. I think that's a worthy goal. I think we need to figure out how to get paid for it. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Further questions for the chief? I couldn't see. Councilwoman Valdivia Akala, did you have your hand up? Okay. All right. Well, thank you. Good observation, Deputy Mayor. I appreciate that. Thank you, Chief. We'll move on to Agenda Item Five, the Consent Agenda. Madam Clerk?
A is approval of public works administration contract between the City of Topeka and Thompson Consulting Services, LLC, for on-call services related to disaster response. B is resolution introduced by Councilmember Spencer Duncan granting Christ the King Catholic Church an exception to the provisions of Topeka City of Topeka Code Section 945150 at Seek. C is an ordinance introduced by interim City Manager Richard Neinsten allowing and approving city expenditures for the period of May 27 through June 30, 2023, and enumerating said expenditures therein. D is an ordinance introduced by interim City Manager Richard Neinsten allowing and approving city expenditures for the period of July 1 through July 28, 2023, and enumerating said expenditures therein. E is approval of an agreement between Strategic Government Resources, SGR, and the City of Topeka for interim city manager services. F are minutes of the regular special meeting of August 22, 2023, and there are no applications.
You've heard the consent agenda as read. Is there a motion to accept? Motion to accept by Deputy Mayor Dobler, second. By Councilwoman Ortiz, if you'll call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Hofer.
Yes.
Mayor Padilla.
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller.
Yes.
Valdivia Akala.
Yes.
Ortiz.
Yes.
Kell.
Yes.
Nagar.
Yes.
Dobler.
Yes.
And Duncan.
Yes.
We have nine yes. Motion carries.
Thank you. Motion's been carried. Move to Agenda Item Six, and the action items, if the clerk will read.
A is a public hearing to consider comment from the public concerning the governing body's consideration whether to exceed the TMTA's revenue-neutral rate of 3.853 and impose a proposed tax rate of 4.2 mils.
Mr. City Manager.
Mayor and governing body, this is a... Mayor and governing body, thank you. This is a required public hearing that you have to conduct on behalf of TMTA. Now, what the public needs to understand, and you should understand, is that you levy the property tax dollars for TMTA. They certify that to you. You really have no say over what they do. I believe you do appoint board members to TMTA, but what you're doing tonight is, they are a separate budgeting entity that is connected to your budget, but they have to own, they have to conduct their own budget hearing and revenue-neutral rate, and what you're being asked to approve is to allow them to exceed the revenue-neutral rate for TMTA. It's clear as mud.
Before we move into the public hearing piece, Adam, ready, do you have information that you want to share?
Not at this time, sir. I think that City Manager was able to brief.
All right. At this time, I will open the public hearing on this item, and I will recognize the governing body members if they have any comments they wish to address on this item, but I want to first recognize the public, and so I will open, at this time, the public hearing and ask if there is anyone present who would like to speak to the matter. Sir, would you step forward and identify yourself, please?
Okay, I am George Brown, and I live in southwest Topeka in Prairie Trace. And I have more questions about this than I do really answers because I don't really know a whole lot about the Topeka Metro Transit Authority, but I see the amount of dollars that go to it, and it kind of makes me ask questions. So in '21, there was 5.3 million allotted to Topeka Metro Transit, and so the proposed, by what I received in the mail, is 6.2, almost 6.3 million. So that's an increase of $1 million. And so as I looked back at their budget that they have available in 2020, they had an excess of 2 million, almost 2.1 million. In '21, they had an excess of 2.35 million. In '22, they broke even. And then this year, it shows a deficit of $217,000. Okay? So from what I'm understanding is, is like the mill levy is almost like a grant to them because the revenue is the same as the expenditures from the city side of things. And in reading everything that I have, they are decreasing the service from half-an-hour intervals to one-hour intervals. So to me, that would be less maintenance of the equipment, less fuel, and it also shows where they have a problem with hiring people to service drivers. So with the cut in service, why are we asking to increase, basically go along with the 4.2 that they've received since I moved here, at least in 2012, because that's what all my property tax statements say, of the 4.2? So why the need to increase if they're cutting the service? And then, one of the things that I did think was great about the Topeka Metro is their great program for school kids. From what I see, they're going to provide free transportation for students, and so my question there is, a lot of the school districts, my son went to Washburn Rural, we get charged a transportation fee. So do the school districts reimburse some of the funding for Topeka Metro? And if not, are they charging it and not issuing the services that they are required to issue from the district? And so the budget, 6.2, almost 6.3, with a population of 126,000, comes out to roughly $49.92 per person, and $300 year pass is what it is to be on a fare for one line. And do one in six people in Topeka use this service? I don't know. If they are using it, I don't see it, but I'm also at work all day long, and they may be using it during the day. It's something that I would consider using, but I got to be at work way before Topeka Metro runs. So those are my questions, comments, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Deputy Mayor Dobler and then Councilman Kell.
Thank you, Mayor. Is anybody from Topeka Transit here to speak on behalf of Topeka Transit?
Yes.
Perhaps that question could be, those questions could be directed to, I don't think we have the ability to answer those questions.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, I'm Robert Miller. I'm one of the board members of Topeka Metro. Behind me is Robert Higginson, he's our general manager. How would you like me to address some of those questions for you, take them from the top? Users, folks who ride the bus, or folks who basically don't have any other transportation, don't have a car, have some medical or physical limitation that keeps them from riding the service. So typically, it's somebody who doesn't have the ability to walk out, get in their car, and drive to work. As a user, you're going to find it's a, plainly, it's an hour drive across town on the bus service where it's a 15-minute drive in your car. So we're not the utility that people use because it's easy. In terms of the school district, we provided for a fee, school passes for students 501. We tried to engage them in conversation during the summer and during last spring, but by the end of July, they were just kind of radio silent. So as a group, we decided that, as a board, we decided that if we left the kids in a lurch with no transportation, that wasn't probably a good thing, so we decided to go ahead and have free passes for all high school students in the city. So you show up from any one of the high schools, you can ride the bus within our service area, whether it's a parochial, private school, or public school. Let's see here, cuts. That was one of the questions that was asked. Basically, the changes, if you will, in terms of service, we eliminated two in our bulk periods during the early morning and late in the afternoon. On many of the routes, we have two buses run on 30-minute intervals. Well, two of the routes, one of them obviously, the 12th and Huntington Route is under construction. Ridership has plummeted on that over the last two years because detours, you know, where the bus is going, where you're going to get picked up, it has made it too difficult mainly for folks to ride, and probably in hindsight, what we should have done, suspended service on that a couple of years ago during construction. That's on us, but we decided to continue service on an hourly basis on that route to help service the public. The other route we reduced service on was the 17 Route. Again, not a lot of ridership happening on there, so we went ahead and reduced that. Also, we quit going down Rice Road as we were picking up nobody at the prison. So we sped up our service by doing that. We've increased service with the MOD program. Basically, that runs in the High Crest in east Topeka. We've increased service with the MOD program, basically that runs in the High Crest and East Topeka neighborhoods, which basically, if you will, basically takes up about the cost of a route. So we've increased some services in some areas where people use it and reduced it in other areas where people don't use it. We're trying to focus on the folks who use the service rather than where, you know, we might think people might like to ride it. We want to focus on the people who do ride it. Our excess over those two years that the gentleman talked about was actually federal funding through COVID that basically we got. And we went without fair revenue during those years. So yeah, we had some excesses that came along, and because we had some capital come along, we've also won a couple of grants for, I think, seven and a half million for new buses, of which our part's going to be 1.4 million dollars, and another grant that we had a couple of years ago for electric buses, of which our part's like 1.2 million. So a lot of that money was spent in capex in terms of where those funds went. And I already forgot what the other questions were. Did that answer any questions you guys had?
Councilman Cale?
No, I know the VA was on the possible chopping block of going through the VA to, was that cut or was that kept?
That was kept. It's, right now, we drive onto the property, and we drive, we actually drive far, pretty far south, so that we don't have to go through their main entrance and through the roundabout, because it's not sized for a bus, if you will. So right now, that's one of those, we're still going to serve the VA, we have a stop on their property. It's whether we go drive into the property or we go by the property is the issue there.
My feeling there is that that's almost like dropping someone off, let's say you don't go on the property. That's like dropping someone off at St. Francis that needs to go to Stormont, and they have medical conditions. You know, that'd be kind of my equivalent to that, because there are services all throughout that complex for, for people. And as we're talking, the heat right now is an issue.
Right.
And so some of these people have health issues, and you know, we're going to expect them to, you know, possibly have to walk all the way across the complex, when, you know, I don't see why cutting the service like that, especially for people that are medically needy, is a smart move. Especially when there's nothing really to, for them to, if they get dropped off on, you know, you're only going to be able to drop off on the southbound Gage or the west, or the eastbound 21st. So, because there's nothing set up for them to cross the roads right now on either one of those roads. So it's going to, I think it's going to be a major inconvenience for any of those, and I see a lot of veterans using the bus service.
Right.
Just to be clear, we are not cutting that service.
Okay.
So what we were going to do was, we're having running time issues, really, because we're having to go in their outbound and in their inbound both, to remedy some of those running time issues. We are going to only go through there in one direction. But after going to the public, we're still going to go through there both directions.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Further questions? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I need to ask again, though, if there, is anyone else who, present who would like to speak to this matter? And for the third time, anyone else present who would like to speak to this matter? Okay. I now recognize the governing body, if they wish to speak to this matter. Councilman Hiller?
Just a quick clarification for the public, and this group, as I think Mr. Brown mentioned, that 4.2 mils is exactly what they've been doing since maybe 2010. So it, the dollars per mil has grown, but they have, they're still holding the line at their mil levy, correct? Appreciate that. We might want to make sure, maybe Brenda, that we, in the past, we've made sure that they came in and kind of gave us an update, maybe a month before, so that we were a little fresher with, with change in city manager. I don't know who's responsible to remember that, but it would, it might have helped with some context this time. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
I guess continuation of the informational part of it, maybe for me, because I don't really, this is so confusing. And I think part of it's the way it's written, too. It's, you know, we are not imposing a mil levy tonight. We are, we're not setting their budget, we're not doing anything. They could, in fact, cut their mil levy if they wanted to in their regular proceedings, I assume. Maybe we have to approve it.
We actually do.
But are we, we're not setting their budget tonight, are we?
No.
Okay. Everybody clear with that? Because the way it's written, it says approval will allow the city to exceed the revenue-neutral rate and impose a levy of 4.2 mils. It sounds like we're, we're setting the budget tonight, but we're not. Yes?
Well, technically, we do set their levy when we pass our budget. It's part of all of that. So they do have their own budget hearing. It's a weird, confusing aspect of the law. So they have their own budget hearing, they decide what they want. The law says we shall levy what they tell them, us, they're going to levy, but we actually certify that as part of all of our budget documents.
But we're not doing that tonight.
No.
All we're saying is, it could be 4.2, it can't be above that, it could be below that.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
And that's up to them.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Councilman Duncan?
Thank you, Mayor. So I had a couple, since it's, we'll talk about it now, even though, because it applies to both of these R and R votes we're about to take on the metro and then our own. So I'll just bring it up now as we do it. As Councilmember, Deputy Mayor Dobler said, these statements are confusing. We all got them. They're not too user-friendly. It's a newer process. This is year three. The state brought this down. The county, I think, is still working on these statements. I think the state's going to take up what they need to look like even once more next year. And I know I'll be part of that process with the League of Municipalities, making it a little more user-friendly. I think one of the things that's frustrating from my perspective is, and in fact, I heard this on WIBW last night, one of the reporting essentially said, they're raising your mil levy if they do this, because it's, because the way they read this, and that's just not accurate. You have to look at what the current year that we've proposed is, and it's exactly what we had last year. So we are telling the citizens from a city perspective, we promise you, if nothing else, we are not raising the mil levy. In fact, the proposed budget we have lowers the mil levy, if that's the budget that we end up passing. Now, it is absolutely fair, full disclosure, to say that, are your property taxes going up because of the valuations? Yes, they are. And that's when we then have policy discussions about our role in setting the mil levy, to whether we can offset some of that or how that plays into that. So that's fair to say. But it is a little confusing the way these are written, and I think that's been some of the confusion. I will point out, the state exempted themselves from this process, and they don't actually have to do this and tell people that they're taking the increased valuation also, but God bless them. So regardless of where people vote tonight on whether they think we should exceed that revenue-neutral, and we may have that discourse there, I think it's at least fair to explain to everybody that the budget the city is proposing actually is going to lower the mil levy. So just wanted to put that out there, Mayor. Thank you.
Further comment from the governing body?
Mayor?
Councilwoman Hiller?
Well, I think Councilman Duncan is trying to talk about both of these together, but as far as TMTA, we're not lowering the mil levy. They're not suggesting lowering the mil levy, and that would not be our vote. It would just be later when we get to our city one, just, just to clarify. Thanks.
Further comments from the governing body? Seeing none, is there a motion? Oh, Councilman Duncan?
Can I get a clarification from staff? What does a yes vote do? What does a no vote do? Because sometimes it's a little backwards on some of these.
Well, depending on if the motion is to exceed, then the yes vote would be that, yes, they can exceed the R and R. There is no motion on the floor yet, however, so if the motion was not to exceed, then let me rephrase that after I find out what the motion is.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
I'll make a motion, if I could, to set the mil levy for TMTA not to exceed 4.2 mils, which is exactly the same as it is this year.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor, is the second to the deputy mayor's motion. Second from Councilwoman Hiller. Okay, if you call the roll, please.
Okay, Mayor Padilla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
I thought we were going to get an explanation of what a yes vote would do.
So based off the motion, it would allow them to exceed the revenue-neutral rate, but not exceed 4.2, which is what last year's mil levy was.
Okay. Just making sure, yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Cale?
Yes.
Nagar?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
And Hofer?
Yes.
We have 10 yes, motion carries.
Okay, I want to check with the city attorney there. So we're done with this, and we're going to have to go to the next one?
Correct.
Okay, good. All right. We'll move to the second action item, 6B, if the clerk will read.
B is a public hearing to consider comment from the public concerning the governing body's consideration of adopting a budget for 2024 that exceeds the revenue-neutral rate, which is 35.741, and a resolution introduced by interim city manager Richard Neinstedt to levy a property tax rate that exceeds the city of Topeka's revenue-neutral rate.
Mr. City Manager?
So Mayor and governing body, you now get to go through the same discussion with your budget, right, with your budget. And if you approve this, if you approve the city to exceed the revenue-neutral rate, the revenue-neutral rate is 35.741 mils, and what's being requested of you is 37.963 mils, which exceeds that rate, and you would have to give permission to do that through a motion.
Okay. And as in the last procedure, we'll open this for a public hearing. So I will ask, is there anyone present who wishes to speak to this matter? And I believe I have, at least in my notes here, Mr. Brown, had you signed up to speak for this particular item as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just step forward.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilmembers. Again, this is a lot of questions concerning the process. And the main process that it seemed like when I went to the county meeting, and it also concerns me here at the city meeting, is the appraisals. Okay? Your mil levies, they are what they are. If you, as a council, don't really understand the process, me, as the normal citizen, is not going to understand the process. So for me, mil levies, bonds, all that sort of stuff, whenever it comes up, and it's put out there for us to vote on or anything like that, then I try and research, is it going for a good cause, that sort of thing. So bonds for schools, stuff like that, usually people approve because that concerns kids. So the mil levy, when I bought my house in 2012, was 35.838, according to my tax records. Since then, it has been in the upper end of 39, ranging anywhere from 39.687 to 39.939. But in that same period, from 2012 to 2023, I went from paying $705.61 in city property tax to $1,131.52 in property tax to the city. I think I am like anybody in that if I am paying more for services, I expect at least what I was receiving before, if not more. Since I've moved into Topeka in 2012, which I also moved here when I was stationed at Fort Riley in 2000 and 2001. So the city of Topeka is where I've spent the majority of my life. I grew up in a little town of Sedan, Kansas, made the news recently, or in the spring, for having flowers planted in their potholes. Okay? City of Topeka hasn't made the news for flowers in the potholes, but I can tell you, there's more potholes here in the lane miles that I drive than in Sedan. Okay? The crime, the crime has also increased. Okay? I do not mind paying more if I can see enforcement of people not running red lights here in Topeka. You can tell when you drive around Topeka, the people that live here versus tourists. We stop and we wait after it turns green to make sure nobody's running that red light before we proceed. Okay? So for me, it's an increase of more than 50% of what I paid in 2012, and I feel like the services are not near what they were at the time. So to quote the Emporia State President that was on the news recently, "Sometimes you have to cut programs and fund those that you deem necessary to where you can do those well." Okay? That's not verbatim what he said, but that's pretty much the gist of it. The city of Topeka covers a lot of things, and sometimes I think that they spend more than what they should, and they need to get back to the root of what the city of Topeka is here for. So thank you for your time. That's it.
Thank you, sir. For a second time, is there anyone here present who would like to speak to this matter? On 6B.
Got it.
Am I okay to move forward? Thank you. Is there anyone here present who would like to speak to this matter on 6B? Okay? Seeing none, now I ask the governing body members if they wish to speak to this matter. Councilwoman Hiller?
Quick question for Freddie, Freddie and Adam. The, I'm not looking at the number right, yes, I am. This number of, let me get it right. The revenue, the 37.963 mils that's on the agenda today is not the number that we started with when we first got the budget.
That is correct.
Because you, you've sent us a memo about reducing it. Could you just clarify?
Yes, ma'am. So to start it, for 2023, the city of Topeka mil levy was established at 38.963. When we started the budget process, we'd proposed a flat mil levy, meaning for 2024, the mil levy would be also a 38.963. Through these conversations of several, for several months, we have gone from the 38.9 to a 37.9. And that is the current proposed mil levy for the city of Topeka budget. And that one mil levy decrease is about equivalent of a one and a half million dollars of property tax savings for all homeowners in the city of Topeka.
Thank you. And if I could follow up, technically, this is our revenue-neutral hearing, so we could just vote to exceed revenue-neutral right now, or we could go ahead and lock in that cap at one mil less than we started, than we had last year and that we started with. Correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead and add it in if we, if we choose.
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilman Cale?
I agree a lot with what Mr. Brown said. We need to look at certain things in our budget and see where we can do some cutting, but also where we can reallocate things. And a good example he brought up was the traffic light situation. We sometimes have an issue of crime in our town, and if you start letting certain things go with certain people, then they're going to start pushing that level where they're going to, our crime rate increases or other things that happen in our city that is less attractive for everyone in our city. So we maybe start allocating the money to certain areas where we know we can do the most damage to get our city in the, in the right light. I've been a big advocate of fixing our potholes in our city, especially in our main routes, all of our arterial roads to get where people from out of town are coming, but also people that travel those roads every single day, and they're not having their shocks and structure placed every other year because of all of our potholes. But if we just start looking at what we need to do as a city, that we can, we can spend the money we already have and... we already have and look where it needs to go the best, and then we can do the most damage and without having to increase our budget too high. Because it seems like all the time, we're just asking for more money, and I kind of, more I thought about with Metro, it's like, well, we keep on funding the Metro, but we keep on cutting services. So it's this, it's one of those things of, we need to look at where we're spending our money to get the most bang for our buck and do the most damage to make our city the best it can be.
Further comment from the governing body? Councilwoman Hofer?
Okay, being new to this process, this sets us up to start working on narrowing down the budget or adding to the budget, whatever, next week. Is that the process that we're...
We don't have.
Because somebody explained to me the process, so I know where we're going from here. I haven't had a chance to ask.
Councilman Duncan?
So what this process does is, it required us a month ago or whatever, to say when our hearing date was and what, for lack of a better term, what the highest mill levy we were going to go to was proposed this year, which we've set same as last year. It then gives us the opportunity, where we have to then vote to decide whether we're gonna do this R and R, which means essentially, and this is the very kindergarten way to put it, okay, are we going to accept the valuations essentially? If we don't, our rate would be set at no higher than the 35 mils that is outlined in the property statement. If we say we're gonna go ahead and go above that revenue neutral rate, then it would say we're still, we haven't set our mill levy rate. That's not done till we pass our budget, but we are saying it is not going to exceed the 38 point, whatever it is that we've already posted. What that number, we can go as low as we want after that, we just can't go any higher than that once we've made this decision. Same with if we don't go above revenue neutral, we can't go any higher than 35, we can go lower than that. So that's essentially what we're doing here. I don't know if that really helps or not, but...
Councilwoman?
More want to know what happens, okay, say this passes, what is the next step?
The next step would be a budget hearing, which is the next agenda item, and then following the budget hearing next week, you would vote to approve your budget. At that time, you could delete things out, you just can't go higher than what we published, which Adam would have to tell me what the mill levy we published for the budget was. But that's the next step. Pass this, then you have a budget hearing, or don't pass this, whichever you would like to do, then you have a budget hearing, and then next week, you actually pass the budget.
Is there discussion next week on top of what we might discuss tonight?
Yes, before you pass the budget, it's always subject to amendments, you can amend anything you would like in it.
Okay.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. So our current mill levy is 38.963. It appears that the staff has graciously already imposed a one-mil cut on the budget to take it down to 37.963, which I think is great. I think we set that as our top, and then potentially work down from there. So if there's no other comments, I'd make a motion to exceed the revenue neutral rate, but not exceed a mill levy of 37.963.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Emerson. If you'll call the roll, pardon, okay, Councilman Duncan?
Well, I'm gonna make a comment now, only because of the way the motion was set, which I have no issue with, except I want to explain, I'm fully supportive of us making it no higher than the 37 that's being proposed. The difference, a mil right now is about 1.4 million, so the difference between that 3.5 rate and the 3.7 is 2.8 million. It's my belief, we would be just fine, we're gonna have a surplus at the end of this year. We have had a surplus every single year I've been on this council, including our COVID year. I will probably vote no on this, because if we're that close to me, we can bring it home and do it at the 35 rate. I'm sure I'm an outlier, and that's fine, and I was gonna make those comments later, but only because of the way that the motion was made, I wanted to make them out. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Emerson, earlier you had your hand up too, did you have a comment before we take the vote?
Nothing that was necessary, Mayor, but thank you.
Any further comment? Seeing none, if you'll clarify the vote again, please.
A vote yes would be to exceed the revenue neutral rate, but ultimately, when you pass your final budget, to stay under the 37... The numbers that he said.
37.963.
Yep.
All right. Let's make sure that we clarified on it. If you'll call the roll, please.
Okay. Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Baldivia Akala?
No.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Cale?
Yes.
Nager?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
No.
Hofer?
No.
Mayor Padilla?
Yes.
We have seven yes, the motion carries, with Baldivia Akala, Duncan, and Hofer voting no. Motion carries.
Move on now to action item 6C, which is again another public hearing. Brenda, would you read, please?
See, it's a public hearing for the purpose of hearing and answering objections of taxpayers relating to the proposed City of Topeka 2024 operating budget.
City Manager?
So Mayor, governing body, and citizens, this is your actual, this is your actual public budget hearing on the 2024 budget, which Director of Finance and City Budget Manager will take you through. The top mill levy, which was published in a paper, was 37.963 for the entire budget, and after publication, you can only lower it. You cannot increase it, you can only lower it. So it's...
Mr. Mayor, members of the body, following the city council meeting on August 27, the Finance Department would like to propose a targeted strategy aimed to providing property tax relief to our cities, to our cities' residents, particularly in light of recent significant home value increases, as well as reducing reserve funds by at least $2.3 million. So the latest City of Topeka proposed budget would include these two strategies. One, reserves fund reduction, we recommend allocating $2.3 million from our reserves funds to address facility maintenance expenses. These investments essential to preventing the quality and functionality of public buildings, and by repurposing the portion of these reserves, we can achieve the necessary upkeep while simultaneously fulfill the goal of reducing the city's reserves. And second, it's a property tax relief. This reduction in reserve funds will allow us to mitigate the financial burden on the residents, especially, we propose a decrease of a full mil of the city property tax, which is equivalent to one and a half million dollars in combined reduction of city property taxes. This measure will provide tangible financial relief to homeowners, helping them manage the impact of higher property tax values under tax bill.
Adam, do you have anything else? Okay, City Manager?
So I think, Mayor and governing body, to put this in perspective for you and for the public, this budget, the maximum limit of this budget, which includes the TMTA, is And you levy a property tax of $61,786,954, and that is split up over about four funds, and a fourth of that is out of your bond and interest fund to cover any outstanding debt, cover special assessments that get paid or don't get paid, so that's the bottom line of your budget.
Okay. This too requires a public hearing, and we have some people signed up for the public hearing for this particular item. I'll open, I now will open this public hearing, and I'll ask, is there anyone present who would like to speak to this matter? And I do have Mr. George Brown signed up for this matter as well. Mr. Brown?
Thank you again, Mayor, thank you, council members. For me, on this issue, I've been a government employee, I've also worked in the private sector. Some of the things that I've experienced as a government employee, when you set a budget and you try to adhere to that budget, a lot of times, there are reservations about spending money throughout the year until it gets to the end of the year. And then it's like a scramble to see how quickly you can spend the funds that are left. Okay? So I don't know if that's how the City of Topeka operates, because I was not an employee of the City of Topeka, but I do know that there are things that, like the elephant in the room of a hotel that was purchased, that it's like, okay, where's the funding coming from for that, and where's it at in the city budget? I didn't see it whenever I was going through there, that sort of stuff, so I'm kind of like, eh, what's going on with the city budget? And whenever I compared the city budget compared to the Topeka Metro, the numbers didn't match up. So that makes me question, how accurate is this city budget? And how is the funding actually being allocated? And so like I mentioned earlier, kind of getting back to the basics of what the city government is supposed to be, I realize there's a lot of social services, things like that, that are mandated by a lot higher governments than you. You have no control over that. But as far as seeing how the funds are spent, like I said, I didn't see the numbers matching up between Topeka Metro and the City of Topeka as far as the budget in the past, and where the funds were allocated, so it kind of made me question where the funds are now. And since we are getting an increase of taxes, whether the mill levy increases or decreases, my taxes are going up, it makes me question, where is my money going? So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. For a second time, is there anyone present who would like to speak to this matter? And I have Mr. Leroy Whitaker signed up. Mr. Whitaker? Okay. For the third time, is there anyone present who would like to speak to this matter? I'll call the name. And I have Michael Byington. Mr. Byington? Just step forward, please.
Thank you. My name is Michael Byington, I'm a certified orientation and mobility specialist by training. I also serve as president of the Kansas Association for the Blind and Visually Impaired. I'm a member of the Topeka ADA, that's Americans with Disabilities Act Advisory Council, and I mention that because some of the research that I have done was aided by my membership of that body. However, I am not speaking for the ADA Advisory Council tonight. They have investigated the issue, but they have not taken a position, per se, to date. The issue that I'm talking about is one that's been confusing. It does clearly relate to the budget, however, up until today, the information that I had received from city staff was that the contract for the Bird scooters operation in Topeka would be under consideration, and that obviously, funding of that contract would be a part of the city budget. Today, I was informed that I was given that information in error, and that in fact, that's a five-year con, a five-year contract, so apparently, it is an item that is carried over. The concern that I wish to express, from a professional standpoint, of a person who is certified to teach people who are blind and visually impaired to travel, and as a representative of a statewide organization, serving people who are blind and visually impaired, is that the Bird scooters, with a top operating speed of 12 miles an hour, and being rented by people who have little to no experience in driving such scooters, and who have probably not ever looked at the city traffic rules for how those are to be driven, which I have read, by the way, the idea of pedestrians in the City of Topeka, and scooter drivers sharing space, such as on sidewalks, in crosswalks, et cetera, is not a pedestrian-friendly idea. Now, your rules suggest that those scooters, in most instances, should not operate on sidewalks, but needless to say, our organization has received complaints from people who have been, who have felt that they have been near being hit by a scooter when they were using a sidewalk. The Bird people have met with us, and they were actually very responsive to our issues about where scooters are being parked that were impeding accessibility, but they did not express any desire to make the computers, the scooters, make any type of sound. Without that accommodation, it is my request that the contract not be continued, and that those scooters not be in any way, either as a revenue source or an expenditure, be a part of the Topeka city budget. Thank you. I will open, stand for questions if desired.
We won't have a question and answer, response, or, we don't do that on an opening public hearing, but thank you for your comments. Councilman Duncan?
I just will ask the city manager, because I didn't know it was a five-year contract either, could you just get us that information, clarification on what that is, and then we can pass that on to...
Sure, I can, I have it in front of me too. It was renewed in October 2022 for four years, under the former city manager. It can also be terminated at the city's convenience within 30 days at any time.
Okay, that's just one clarification, thank you.
Mayor?
Councilwoman Hiller?
Related to that, I think that that's a, more of a permit to operate that business in our city, I don't think it's part of our budget, we're not paying them anything to run that system, are we?
Adam, Freddie?
I do not believe so, sir, but I can definitely check on that if I need to.
We do not pay them, but they pay us a licensing fee, so I think he means it's on the revenue side.
Okay. I personally, I'll just add that I, I think that the comment, I was on the council when we first got courted by Bird, and when we did the downtown requirements, that you couldn't have scooters or bicycles on the sidewalks in the downtown, but we allowed them everywhere else. The idea of them, for our ADA purposes, having, making some noise, makes a lot of sense. I see people whizzing along, I mean, very happily, it seems to be very popular, but I understand the issues for accessibility, and perhaps that could be referred by us to the appropriate staff that negotiates those things.
Councilman Cale?
Yeah, I've actually brought it up several times, that the way they're just parked right in the sidewalk, and how they're, yeah, there's, most of it's, the way they're left when they're not in use, is more my biggest complaint, I hear and I see, and I stop all the time and move them out of the way, and I have hundreds of pictures that I've taken just for evidence that if we were to end this, and Bird wanted to complain, I could show them that this is how it's been and how it gets left. So it'd be nice, if there's some other way, we could work together with them on that, because there's some people's choice of transportation, just like the Metro, or having a vehicle or bicycle, so I don't want to totally eliminate them, but I'd like... So I don't want to totally eliminate them, but I'd like to see something done to make it where our sidewalks aren't blocked, our entryways from the roads aren't blocked in that situations.
Further comment from the governing body? Councilwoman Valdiviakala?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, commenting on the whole thing with the scooters, I am, I am not a supporter of them at all. I continue to see, I was just flabbergasted. There's been twice where I've seen youth, they had to have been less than 15 years old, riding on the street, and there was someone riding on it with them, holding on. And I think it's dangerous. I think that even though Bird has tried to make accommodations for picking things up in a more timely fashion, for me, for what I've seen and the way that they are laid out still in different places, you know, if, if the contract doesn't end early, when it comes up for review, it's certainly something that I, I would not support. So I just wanted to get that feedback in there. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. We've heard from the public and heard from the governing body. Councilwoman Hiller?
I did come prepared with some comments about the budget, if this is an appropriate time.
We're, we're, yep.
Okay.
I just wanted to say in general that I really appreciate the staff's hard work on this. It's been a little dizzying. It's still your second year on this, this budget and this kind of budget book, but the responsiveness and, and what you brought forth, I guess it was just last Friday, though, which is kind of last minute for us to kind of absorb, but I really appreciate what you've done. I am okay with, your recommendation along the way was to hang on to the reserve and, until we had the hotel figured out, which was one of Mr. Brown's questions earlier. I am comfortable with that. I appreciate the move that you took nonetheless to say, well, let's go ahead and, and move firm into there, which loosened up some room in the main budget. And if you were moving dreams to cash, which is my understanding from your memo, I'm good with that, too. And that's the kind of motion I know that Deputy Mayor Dobler and I, in particular, have been advocating in terms of moving both routine expenses that have been bonded in the past, and also some discussion of one-time expenses, if in fact, we have what they're predicting as excess revenue over expenses this year, that we spend it, and again, I'll reiterate, I guess as often as it takes, you know, for every million dollars that we borrow with the rates that we have right now, and 15-year terms, it's costing us $600,000. And every time we can save the future taxpayers, those dollars, I'm for it. Until we get ourselves down to where our CIP is, once again, only major projects instead of routine maintenance and so on. So this is really a once-in-a-lifetime chance to, to keep working on that and get that back where it should be. And I appreciate the staff's steps along the way. On that note, when I talked to, I sat down and had my visit with Freddie and said, well, where are we then, Freddie? I've got some notes here, I've been listening in the budgets, but could we cut further? And Freddie's comment to me, sort of to my surprise, was he thought we could still go three mills. And I'm like, really? You know, there've been a lot of discussions, we've got a lot of, lot of, I've called it kites in the air, new projects, challenges that we've been facing, we've got new staff, we've got new department heads, lots of, lots of motion facing homelessness, how do we do that? What's our role? Lots of different things moving. My thought at this point is, for us as a body, I like that $3 million figure. You quoted a similar one that, that we're looking at maybe for the end of this year, to leave that, to leave the budget the way it is right now and pass it in that way, but with perhaps a management direction, both because we have interim management who needs to hear what we thought was important. And, and then, and then really watch the opportunities for cost savings, efficiencies, relooking at our various programs based on outcomes. So even if something's working well, if it's not really, again, I'll go to Mr. Brown's point, contributing to something that's essential for the city, that's essential for us to do. We can spend this time as we're, as we're getting into this budget year, even before 2024 starts, and then on, through that year, charge ourselves with seeing if we can, let's see, Councilman Dobler had a word for it, reprogram, you know, set a goal and even keep track of what we've been able to save, to reprogram into the one-time expenses that can help us long-term. So I'm, I've been taking notes today as well. I do think the management suggestions, or whatever we would want to call them, would be a good companion to this budget when we pass it next week. Also, frankly, I'm just keenly aware that we're looking for a city manager. And I think as we, if we can combine not only the, the outcomes-based budgeting that has been introduced to us, but really apply ourselves and challenge our staff, I think we've got the right staff to do it. I think that kind of activity on our part is, is going to be critical to attracting a city manager that wants to work with a, a community and a council that is working hard at those things. So with that, again, I'm comfortable where it is, appreciate the, the hard work. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So.
You got a hand up.
Councilwoman Valdiviakala, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So one thing, I have several questions, but I want to understand, City Attorney or Brenda or City Manager, whoever, the email that we received from Topeka Jump in reference to the SAVE program, has that been entered into the public record? Did that, did that go to the city clerk as well about their concerns?
I don't think any of the three of us know what email you're referring to.
Wow. Okay. So we got a, a letter from Topeka Jump stating that they were not in support of the $30,000 of the SAVE program. Because I don't want this to be belabored right now, I am going to email Freddie tonight with my questions to see exactly where it is, but they were not supportive of it. There was a rather lengthy email that I, I am going to just request be inserted, and I can, I can pass that on to you, City Attorney and Brenda. It had to do with not supporting the SAVE program, which is budgeted, I think, for $30,000. Is that correct, Freddie?
Yes, ma'am.
I can't hear. I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am. Councilwoman, that is correct, yes.
Okay. Okay. And so they, they go on to say that, at first, that they had been supportive of it, but they have concerns, it's a duplication of service, it did not end up being what it was supposed to be, et cetera, et cetera. I recall that there was an article in the Capital Journal about there being some deep concerns about how the SAVE program was going. I've also heard from both male and female activists that, that work in the reduction of gun violence in Topeka that have concerns about the SAVE program not doing what it was intentionally meant to do. So I, Freddie, will be sending an email to you right after the meeting, asking for some more information about that. And I would just want to ask, if I support that being taken out, that is something that I would move on next Tuesday? Is that correct, telling me the process?
That is also correct, ma'am, yes.
Okay. So then, I just need to get a little bit more information from you, Freddie. I did want to go ahead and put that out. City Attorney and Brenda, City Manager, I'll forward the email on to you that we received from SAVE. This doesn't have so much to do, so much with having received the email from Topeka Jump, as in the past year to year and a half, hearing ongoing concerns that continue to, to just add up that this is a program. I think that there are some deep concerns around now, and we have to look at where we're spending these dollars and if they're actually being used for what they say that they're supposed to be, meant to be used. Because we know that working with youth and gun violence is something that is very important in this city, but we certainly don't want duplication of services, and we certainly don't want the money being used for something else other than what its originally, its original intent was. So that's all I'm going to say about it, and I'll be emailing you after and looking to move on something next Tuesday. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Neger?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I found the email that Councilwoman Valdiviakala is referring to. I see that it was sent to specifically me as a councilperson, and it was sent last Friday. So I can go ahead and pass that along to everybody, City Attorney, since I already have it up, Councilwoman, so. That's all I had to say, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Good. Councilwoman Hiller?
A question for what the recommendation might be from either the police department or, or finance, in a situation where, and it's interesting, we, I think we all got the SAVE, the Jump memo, but it was a, that SAVE program is one that Jump actually arranged to come and do a presentation so that we all could learn about it at first, and they were advocating it first, so it sounds like it's not worked out the way they'd hoped. Is there a recommendation to us when we see a, a program like that, that's not working, but it's toward an initiative that we do want to see good things happen from, that we recommend cutting that amount from the budget or simply kind of taking the name off the line item, if you will, and leaving the dollars? Is there any?
That's, that's an excellent question, ma'am. I think that, one thing that we could do, it's to provide you and the rest of the governing body with a briefing on a specific programs, to invite those directors to talk to you about the process, the procedures that they have, and at that point, I think that it would probably clarify any questions that you might have.
If I may, before we start down this road of a program that's not working.
All right. That's. That someone says is not working.
That someone says is not working.
Correct.
We haven't given those primaries who are involved with the program.
Exactly.
To give a presentation about the effectiveness of the program.
Exactly.
And I think that's essential before we get in a hurry to start.
That's kind of where I was going with that.
Yeah, good. Thank you.
Or particularly taking the money away.
Yeah.
You know. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment from the governing body? This will require a vote for the resolution. Is there a motion to approve?
No.
On this one?
Just to hear.
Okay, we're on city. Okay. I got in the habit there of the last three. Okay, we'll move on then to Action Item 6D. If the clerk will read.
D is a resolution introduced by the members of the Policy and Finance Committee establishing a city property tax rebate for 2024.
Mr. City Manager?
So Commissioner, excuse me, that was in a previous life. Mayor and governing body, we have discussed over the course of the past several months about a program being developed that would rebate city property taxes for 2024. The Policy and Finance Committee have taken a looked at, a look at it. They moved forward a proposal to you, to the governing body, and gave staff permission to write a full draft for consideration by the governing body by vote of 2-0. Now, I'm going to give you the short version, then others can give you the long version, like Commissioner Duncan. It basically is a program that's built, it is not a program that a lot of taxpayers would likely be able to use. They're using it in several different cities. The amounts that are being refunded are not what I would consider, it's not a run on the bank, so to speak, in property taxes. And generally, the people that qualify for it are those who might qualify for the homestead exemption, that are low to moderate income. But what it does do is, if the program were enacted, is it does give those citizens that need assistance the most, another program they can consider for assistance or rebate of their property tax. That's the short version, so.
Sure. Yes, sir. I can. Please. Mr. Mayor, thank you. Thank you, City Manager, Mr. Mayor, members of the governing body. The city staff heard you loud and clear that, given the unprecedented time of house price inflation, the city of Topeka should put in place a mechanism to reduce the property tax burden on citizens. The city of, the city staff proposes the implementation of the city of Topeka Property Tax Rebate Program, aimed at providing essential support at our city, our city's resident. Hold on. There you go. Just leave it there. This program will be funded with $300,000 from the 2024 city of Topeka budget. But first, let's discuss how property taxes calculated and distributed. Slide. So the bar chart here shows the eight tax entities in Kansas that levy a property tax in 2022. So the bar chart above shows the name of the entities in the mill levy. The bar chart below shows the mill levy transformed into dollars, giving a typical home appraise at $150,000. As you can see here, Shawnee County puts the highest tax burden at 49.861 mills, followed by the school district at 46.013 mills. These two tax, tax entities account for more than 62% of all the property tax owed by a local homeowner. In 2022, the city of Topeka levied a mill, a mill of 38.963, which is equivalent to $672 per year. Slide. So now, what happened in 2023 when the average home value increased by more than 8%? Keeping everything else constant, the average homeowner would be required to pay an additional $214 per year. Slide. So now the question is, what can the city of Topeka do to alleviate the significant and in some cases, unnecessary home value inflation? You can't affect how much taxes neither the county, the school district, nor any other tax entity may charge. But you can do two things. One, we can reduce a mill from the city's mill levy and move it from 38.9 to 37.9. This would, this would be a total save of one and a half million dollars to all homeowners of the city of Topeka. But we can also, slide, sorry, but we can also create a new program spearheaded by Council Member Duncan and entire Finance, Policy and Finance Committee, where this program could rebate most, if not all, the property tax levied only by the city of Topeka. So our initial draft would have the following eligibility criteria, and this would be similar to the state of Kansas homestead refund. So individuals must be a Topeka resident, they must reside in their property for at least five years, individuals must be of age 65 and older, and they should have a total, they would have a total income of $37,750 or less. So these would be the criterias that one individual household must meet in order to receive the tax refund for the city of Topeka portion. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Questions for Freddie or Councilman Duncan?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Emerson asked me last week, he said, all right, Spencer, who are you trying to help with this program? Right? He said, distill it down for me a little bit and, and let's get there. And I, so I thought about that, and I said, it was actually a pretty easy answer. Part of my district includes, and these folks are representative of a lot of people across Topeka, but it includes the Crestview area. And the folks I see in that area, many of them widowed, or some of them are, are still a wife and spouse, they're older than 65, truthfully, they're older than 75, most of them are 70-plus. They're in homes that are significantly less than that 150, probably 100,000 or less, but at least in that range, depending upon what you are. And the goal of this program is to help them stay in their home longer term, because they may have some health issues, but they can still live in their home. They're not ready to move in with their kids yet if they don't have to. They're not ready to go to assisted living or independent living just yet, and they're just trying to hang on to the house. This is not going to solve all the all their problems. In fact, in many of those cases, if you do the math, you're talking several hundred dollars. On the high end, it could be 650, which we've actually put a cap on it at that. But it's mostly likely than half, about half of that for most people, because it will, can and will only apply to the city portion. But the thought is, if that helps them pay a few extra months of utility bills, or, you know, do some repair on the home, or have to deal, when we give them a citation for not painting the home, right, be able to go to Ford to paint the home, those kinds of types of things, that's who this has been aimed at. I help several people every year file their homestead application with the state, and it was from doing that that I realized this has some merit, and maybe we could do it to the city of Topeka. It is not apples to apples. We have not just taken the state program because it doesn't quite work that way. We have had to tailor it towards Topeka. There are several other cities that we showed, and we brought this up a month ago, that are doing this now. Just to reiterate a few things that Freddie said, it is only applied to folks that are 65 and older. The income slide, we will use the state as a guide, because they use, it's, right now, it's 37.5. They use that, they have a big, huge equation that determines what that is. There's no reason for us to have to do that work every year if the state's doing that work. It does include all income, so they're getting social security and pensions and other income, which is why, as the city manager said, that population goes down, because those people are exceeding that 37,000 between that collective income. We've looked at some of the numbers of who's currently applying for this, and that's why originally we had brought a budget impact of about half a million dollars. In looking at that, we were able to reduce it to $300,000. Worst case, I guess, is if we think we need to exceed that, we come back here to this governing body, next budget, and we have a conversation. Has this program been great? Is it working? Is it too much? And we can go from there. It does have restrictions, as mentioned. You have to have lived in your home for five years. You have to be the owner of that home. It has to be your primary residence. You can't be, own 10 homes and get in on all 10 homes. Has to be the one, and you have to actually be living in it. Has to have your name on the property. You can still apply, and I expect most people will, for the state program, because again, this only covers the city portion. So those folks can apply to still get assistance with all the other taxing entities throughout Shawnee County. And the other thing I was asked was, can we do this for everybody? And I said, well, that's not the primary goal. And maybe someday, it does provide us a framework to look at other categories in the future. But this seems a small way to start this, to see if it works or not, and then kind of go from there. So that was kind of the discussion Freddie and I have had. Some of that was a discussion we had in committee, which now seems like a long time ago, several months back. And that's why it's in front of you this evening. So I just want to make those comments, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Questions from the governing body? Councilwoman Hiller?
Thank you. I keep it short, but I think I have more of something along the lines of the presentation. I think I've made it clear before that I had questions and concerns. Mostly, I was trying to figure out how that would work in my district, where the house values are not as high, where people have low incomes, maybe historically low, rather than just because they've become retired recently. And I was trying to figure out how this would work. I noted on the, the information that we did get back in March, I guess it was, the cities that have tried it, as City Manager said, haven't had much traction. There hasn't been much activity in those couple of examples that were given. Also, they reviewed what the state has already. And so I'm like, well, all right, would we only give people money if there was a gap between what the state provided, or how would this work? We didn't have any information, and still don't, on exactly how it would work. What I learned is that there's a sliding scale for the homestead property tax rebate. So the very lowest income people can get even $100, 100% worth of their tax bill up to $700 already, if they file for the homestead tax. Also, last year, and again, this was in our staff memo in March, the state added another option to that, which was to say that anybody over 65, with an income up to 50,000, and a house value at less than 350,000, could get 100% of their tax increase back from the state. So if, you know, the kind of horror stories that we hear, where maybe somebody's got that, that 150,000 is an average, but it's not what everybody in my district has, for sure. But let's say they were at 150, and it went to 200,000. That's, that would go from your sample of about $2,600 in taxes up to 3,400. That's an $800 tax increase. That's serious. But they could get all of it back through a state program that is an alternative to the homestead property tax. And Spencer and I talked about it a little bit. I said, they can already get their money back for that increase. And so Spencer said, and I really appreciate it, you know, but we want to help these folks out. They're in a, they're in a different, difficult situation. And, and I sympathize with that, and I appreciate bringing up the idea. I think all ideas are good ideas, but then you have to see if they'd fly. I can't make it fly. And I ran, I ran the numbers. I'm fine with even leaving a reserve of $300,000 in the budget and figuring out something that would be equitable. What I did was I ran numbers on even just a $50,000 house in my district. The taxes are under $900 a year. So let's say they went up to 60,000, and we're wanting to relieve a tax burden. That still puts those folks at only $1,000. I mean, $1,000 in taxes is a lot, but it was only $100 increase. If somebody had a $150,000 home, and they got that $50,000 increase that we hear about, that's pretty substantial. That's the 800 bucks. So it was like, all right, what, what kind of options? And I've got some print copies. I just, I didn't know if it was too much, but I just tried to figure out how it would work for a very low-income person. If you're, if you're at the higher end of the range, like two different people with social security, or one or two people with social security and a little bit of pension, you're going to be up in the $25,000 to $36,000 range in that eligible pool. They only get 5% to 10% of their, of the rebate. So for them, it's not as much money. You've got people in the low-end housing that are at the very bottom end of that income level, and you've got people at the upper end. And the same is true with the higher-cost housing. To just kind of briefly go through some examples, what happens is that I never got it clear from Spencer whether the idea was to give everybody back the equivalent of 100% of whatever their city share was, whether they needed it or not, or however much they collected, or whether the idea was to run the same percentage that they would have on the homestead tax against the city share for what we would give them. So I ended up running it both ways. But assuming we're wanting to give them 100% of what the, the city tax was, which I used it just 25%, this is an easy number. If somebody was a very low-income person with the lower-end property value that I suggested, they could get $700 back from the homestead property tax on their $1,000 bill. If we were going to give them a full 250, the equivalent of what their city part was, that low, very low-income household with a low-end home value could get $950 back between the two sources, 250 from us. But if they're at the high end of that trajectory of under $37,000, they could only get, and this is my low-income house here, $50,000 to $60,000, they could only get about 100 back from either the homestead or the property tax rebate. They could still get the 250 from us, but together, they would only get 350 bucks back between the city and state. Somebody who's on the high end of the income level and the high-end home value, again, they owe 3,400 bucks. They could get $800 from the state, 100% of their increase. But then they would get 850 from the city also, because their tax level is so high. So they would end up with 1,650 bucks if we're paying for 100% of the city's share, just because of their status with the state. If they were on the, I'm sorry, that was the very, well, either way, high or low income on the income could, could both get 1,650 if we're paying the full 25%. Whereas if we're just paying the, whatever their, for scale, homestead tax share is, that very low-income person and the low-end home value could again get 700 from homestead and a whole 250 from us, because they're getting 100% of whatever they could possibly be eligible for. But the high-end person, the person whose income was between 25,000 and 36, let's say, again, they owe $1,000 in taxes, they would only get $100 from their homestead rebate or the rebate for the increase, because it was only 100 bucks. But if you use that scale of only getting 10 or, 5 or 10%, because they're at the upper end, from the city's share, they would only get 25 bucks from us, and a total of $125. That, that could be a very typical resident of mine. Then the very low-income homeowners with high-end values could get 800 from the state and 850 from us for a total of 1,650 again. But the high-end income folks with the high-end value would get the 800 from the state, but only 85 ducks from us, for substantially less. So those numbers were all over the place. And I just look, I'm glad that you were concerned about Crestview. I'm looking at the mix of folks that I have in my district that are long-term, low-income folks, lower-cost housing, wouldn't be quite as big of a gap when their taxes went up. And if we want to help, and also disproportionately minority, and we've been talking about having equity in everything that we do, and I just tried every way I could with what information I had, I couldn't make it look balanced for folks. And I think we can do better than that. So it's not to say we, we couldn't have a program. We are already going to drop the taxes a mill. And I think, Spencer, that was your first thing that you really wanted to do, is just lower the taxes overall. So with that, I worked and worked on this to try and make it make sense. I'm happy to, to work on more or other ideas, but I don't think this one is our solution, and I would have to vote no on this one. Thank you.
Councilwoman Valdivia Akla.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have to say, I did not understand that at all. That was, that was just so convoluted. I mean, honestly. And I don't, I don't, I didn't get a snapshot of that, to even follow that.
Understand.
I mean, I just, I cannot believe, I'm going to continue to support this. If we have to come back and relook at it, maybe do away with it altogether. I think that the base, you know, the, the base information that we have on what we want it to look like is good. I, that was mind-boggling. So I'm just going to continue to support it. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Duncan?
So obviously Crestview's in my district, which is why I use it as an example. But obviously, my goal's the whole city, as always. As I stood at the Net Zero House the other night, and I told them, you know, "Thank God you built this in High Crest. I don't care where it's built. If it's good for here, it's good for us all." I don't know where the confusion was. It's always been a 100% rebate on whatever their city. So next year, it'll be 100% rebate on the 37 mills. Regardless of all those numbers you gave us, for every individual, it's all about economy of scale. So it doesn't matter if it's $50 for that one person, or the full 650 for the other. In their budget, that's a zero out for them, regardless of what that number is. And that's the goal, is to take that number of 37 mills, and for those people who are at that age, in that income situation, zeroing something out. It would be great if we could make it higher for some of those, because it is economy of scale. But either way, it's zero for them, regardless of what that actual overall number is. And so that's how I viewed it from day one, is, yep, hopefully, it's more than $25 for some. And I think based on some of the numbers we've looked at, it could be. But even if it's not, that's still $25 less than property taxes they had to pay that year. And then some of the other examples you gave, all it really showed us was, if they can, if they have to cap out at $700 with the state, then we are filling the gap, and we're taking that 300 they owed, and closing that gap for them, making their 1,000 now a full zero, instead of them having to come up with an additional $300. So, so I understand your math. I'm just saying, for me, I looked at it differently as zero is zero, regardless of what that scale is for each individual. So I just think that's where we have the disagreement there, in terms of how we view it. So, thank you, Mayor.
We also have, unless there's another governing body that wishes to make a comment, we do have a gentleman signed up for this particular item. Mr. Brown?
I didn't sign up for this one, ma'am.
Okay. Well, I have your name down here.
Yep.
Okay. Are you sure? Okay, then. Comments been made by governing body. Is there a resolution?
I move to approve, Mayor.
Motion to approve by Councilman Duncan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Neger. If you'll call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Valdivia Akla?
Yes.
Ortiz? I know that she hasn't been feeling, oh, there she is.
There she is.
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Cale?
Yes.
Neger?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hofer?
Yes.
Mayor Padilla?
Yes.
And Councilmember Hiller?
No.
All right, we have nine yes. The motion carries.
Okay. Thank you. We'll move now to Action Item 6E. If you will read, Brenda.
E is a resolution introduced by the members of the Policy and Finance Committee approving a redevelopment incentive program for the NOTO Business Improvement District.
City Manager.
All right, Mayor and governing body, this is the NOTO Business Improvement District Redevelopment Grant Program, and the Policy and Finance Committee recommended $50,000 for 2024. And if funds are available in the 2023 budget, an amount not to exceed $50,000. And I think we've determined that that money is available in this year's budget for that. So what you're being asked to do tonight is to pass a resolution, which was introduced by Policy and Finance Committee, approving the redevelopment incentive program for the NOTO Business Improvement District. That would be for 2023 and 2024, right?
Okay. Councilman Duncan?
Thank you, Mayor. This came out of Policy and Finance unanimous. While the committee will take credit for it, I better give credit to the actual councilmember who made sure we got it done, which was Councilmember Valdivia Akla, who kept it in front of us and helped it work through the process. We talked about this before. It came back, because at that time, there were a few suggestions that were made, that the committee said, "Great, we just didn't make them." So we, staff worked on them, and, and with some assistance from Councilmember Hiller, made sure those got done. And so now it's back with those changes. I'm pretty sure NOTO is good with them. And this will be an ongoing program. So while we talked about the funding there for this year, and then next year, it is written so that it is now an ongoing yearly program in the budget. So, thank you, Mayor.
Further comment from the governing body? Councilwoman Valdivia Akla?
Thank you. Worthy effort by Tom Underwood, again, have said that by all involved. So unless there's anything else, I move to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilwoman Valdivia Akla. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Hiller. If you'll call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Ortiz?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Cale?
Yes.
Neger?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hofer?
Yes.
Mayor Padilla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
And Valdivia Akla?
Yes.
We have 10 yes. Motion carries.
We're approaching that 8 o'clock time. Next on our agenda is Action Item F, was a resolution. If you want to consider this as an opportunity to take a quick 10-minute break, if they're, they're expecting... expectation that there's going to be a lot of discussion on this one? No? Okay.
Actually, I'm meaning the next one, sorry.
Okay. Go when you got to go. We'll move on if you'll read, Brenda, please.
F is a resolution introduced by the members of the Public Infrastructure Committee comprised of Councilmember Tony Emerson, Deputy Mayor Neil Dobler, and Councilmember Michelle Hofer, recommending approval of certain public infrastructure projects.
Okay. Mr. City Manager.
So, Mayor and governing body, I'm going to turn this over to the chair, which is Councilmember Tony Emerson and Braxton Kopley, the Public Works Director.
Councilman, do you wish to speak first, or can I go with Braxton?
Yeah, if Director Kopley is there ready to go, I'd defer to him.
Director Kopley?
Thank you. As part of the adoption of this year's capital improvement program and capital improvement budget, the governing body is now requiring any standalone project with a project budget of over $250,000 to come back in front of this governing body before we put it out to bid for specific approval. Really quickly, we have for Valley Park, as part of the SORT program, we have a number of projects, including mill and overlay, some full reconstruction, as well as some micro-surfacing, and then some spot repairs. We have the North Topeka West Mill and Overlay Project, which is also SORT-funded. The neighborhood has identified three projects that it would like to have mill and overlay with some full-depth reconstruction. We have projects for full-depth repair and failing joint repair, including some panel replacement for concrete streets at the intersections of 6th and Oakley and 6th and McVicker, as well as a 170-foot stretch of 6th Street south of McVicker. And then we have two traffic signal programs, two traffic signal projects, one at Southeast 6th and Golden and one at Southwest 17th and Fairlon. And I will gladly stand for any questions, but I would respectfully ask the governing body to approve this resolution as was recommended by the Public Infrastructure Committee.
Thank you. Councilwoman Emerson?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, we fully support these projects, and I would just note, this would be amusing to Councilwoman Hiller's ears, that of the approximately 4 million projects, I believe, if my quick math over here on the screen is right, only 300,000 of them will be bonded. Everything else is ARBA or cash.
Thank you, sir.
And without mayor, I'd also make a motion to approve.
Okay. Motion to approve by Councilwoman Emerson, with second by Deputy Mayor Dobler. If you will call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Emerson.
Yes.
Cale.
Yes.
Nager.
Yes.
Dobler.
Yes.
Duncan.
Yes.
Hofer.
Yes.
Mayor Padilla.
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller.
Yes.
Valdivia Akla.
Yes.
And Ortiz.
Yes.
We have 10 yes. Motion carries.
Okay. Motion carries. Thank you. Move to Action Item G, if the clerk will read.
G is an ordinance introduced by interim City Manager Richard Neinstad, authorizing establishment of a fund comprised of excess general funds, the proceeds of which will be used to address homelessness.
Mr. City Manager.
So, Mayor and governing body, in order to accomplish this, you need to pass a ordinance, and that involves a home rule on which the mayor has veto authority. But the ordinance is in your book, and since that is a legal item, I will turn to the city attorney to walk through that ordinance as to what it does and what it does not do. And then we'll talk about what happens after you approve.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. I'm happy to stand for questions. Reserve funds in state law are a mix of home rule ordinances that establish them and enabling legislation, which set up some via statute. So, for example, our social liability reserve fund is a statutory reserve fund. There is no state law statute that creates a homelessness reserve fund, so we have to use our home rule power to do that. What a reserve fund allows you to do is, under the cash basis law, if there's money in the reserve fund, it can be spent in future years for that particular purpose without it having to be reallocated and used in the budgetary cycle under the cash basis. So as you put this, create this fund now, you can place however much money you would like to put into the fund over however long you would like to do that, and it can be used for various homelessness innovation strategies moving forward. If at some point you decide it is not in the city's best interest to have a homeless reserve fund, it can also be dissolved via ordinance as well.
Questions for the city attorney? Mr. City Manager?
So I would add on, Mayor and governing body, that what this does is sequester these funds in a homeless fund. Now, what I would tell you is that the internal rules would be, nothing is spent out of that fund unless it is approved by the governing body. And while that may deviate from our normal procedures, funding a million dollars into homelessness, I would argue, deviates from our normal procedures. And that it is a public issue, is an issue that the public is tuned into as to what we are doing with homeless programs. It is an issue that the governing body is highly interested in. And in for all, for the virtue of transparency and doing business in the public, that's why the discussions about that and expenditures out of there ought to be approved by the governing body.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Cale?
Now, would this fund have any redundancy that we already have within the city? So we're not doing the same thing twice in two different departments or anything like that?
We do not have anything of this type in the city.
No. But let me just talk about what you could do. For example, if, say, that Carrie made a presentation to you on how some of these funds would benefit her housing program for people and families that need that housing program, and you felt that was a worthy way of doing that, you could allocate a certain of money towards a program like that. So I believe that the intent of that money is not to build, not to build staff, it's not to underwrite people infrastructure, so to speak, but it is for programs that help address the homeless issues in the community, either by the city or by other groups out there, nonprofit groups, that you give approval to, to have some of those funds allocated to. And no, I don't have it all thought out yet. That's just a concept.
Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That was going to be my question is like, so we have mental health, people with mental health issues that are walking around, but they're not homeless. Or we have addiction, but they're not homeless. So how would this address them? Because that's part of them, part of that, mental health and addiction can lead to homelessness. So this weekend, when I celebrated my birthday, I celebrated with some people in their 90s. It was really actually awesome. And one of the guys, he told me that he gets on YouTube and watches all the homeless things all over the world. And it was very interesting. And one of the things I thought, I'm gonna try, I'm gonna check this out on Saturday, a couple of things, places that he told me to. And one of the things that they said is like, we need to call it what it is, and we're just saying homelessness, but we really need to call it what it is, and we're really just nicely saying the homeless. And I agree, because some of those entities are driving them to be homeless, the mental health and the addiction. So how would this million dollars benefit them? Or how could we use that to benefit them? What's the parameters?
So it is a very broad reserve fund definition, and the fund is simply to address homelessness. So if you had an issue that the governing body felt from a public purpose standpoint goes into addressing root causes of homelessness, like mental health, I think it could be used for any of those types of things.
And then how did we get that figure, or is it just a figure we threw out there?
So the resolution or the ordinance itself simply creates the fund. How much you would like to put into it would be up to the governing body. However, it comes from the fact that in the 2024 budget, there was a million dollars placed for homelessness. By using this funny money in 2023, you can reduce that expenditure on the 2024 side. But I will turn over to Adam Vaughn for a better definition.
Yeah, that's correct. So part of the reason why we wanted to create this fund was because we know that our revenue projections of sales tax are greatly overperforming this year, creating a surplus like what was mentioned earlier. So by creating this fund and allocating this money now, we can take that money out of the 2024 proposed budget, which is out of the currently proposed 2024 budget, and that allows us to lower the mill levy by one, and it also allows us to go forward with the recently approved FIRE union contract.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Dobler and then Councilwoman Hofer.
So where's this million bucks right now?
It's just excess money from this year that is not allocated anywhere.
So it's in the reserve fund essentially, right?
Yes.
What's the current total of the reserve?
So at the end of last year, it was 27 and 1/2. We project about a $5 to $7 million surplus at the end of this year, that we will come to you with proposals to spend down, such as this proposal. So our goal, again, is to make sure that we don't add anything to the fund, excess reserve at the end of this year, and to have the fund balance at about $25.2 million, which would be 22% of our general fund budget.
What happens to this million if we don't allocate it to this fund right now?
Nothing. It would go to the reserve.
Still be there, then.
Yeah.
So we've got a fund, we have no plan, could go here, could go there. We're gonna put a million bucks in, but we could just wait till we have a plan and then see what it costs. I think I'd feel more comfortable doing that. Thank you.
Councilwoman Hofer, then Councilwoman Valdivia Akla, then Councilman Emerson.
Okay, I'm trying to get a grasp on what we could do with the money. So the first thing that comes to mind is EAS. They can always use more money. So say we decide to give them 100,000. Some of the money that they use is to help people get into housing. Some of it is to keep them in housing. So is this saying we'd have to keep it strictly to those that need to be housed? Or could it be anything under EAS guidelines? I'm just trying to figure out how the money could be spent, and it might be the same issue with any other organization if they come in and say they need money.
It's a very broad fund, so it could be anything related to homelessness, and truly the only people that can decide that are you, the policymakers. So it's very broad.
Here's a couple of thoughts, and those are excellent questions, Councilwoman. I'll refer to Carrie's division again. She has some needs there for some programs. It could go there if you agreed with it. Our mental health organization that we partner with Valeo, they have some needs to better address the homelessness out there, that we could contract with them on that. I think my envisioning of this is that you would not be running a program. You would actually be taking solicitations from other entities that you would perhaps review in a special committee. Staff would review those with you, much like how you do social services funds, and they would directly benefit the homelessness out there, and you would actually be defining what that benefit is, if that makes sense.
Okay, taking it a step further, you're saying we go towards programs. So say we decided we had a need for a tiny home village to build it. That's not what this money would go towards.
It could.
It could. It is a very broad definition. Ultimately, you can have any vision you want. What you would be confined by is the words of the ordinance, that it be money that you can point to and define for the public dealt with homelessness. So while that might not be your intent now, you could change your intent, and as long as that dealt with homelessness, you would be confined by that restriction in the ordinance.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Valdivia Akla.
Thank you, Mayor. So there's a number of things that I think that we need to remind ourselves, and I think that City Manager did a number of those. One is to know that we're all actively engaged in this process, but the deal is, we have no idea where we're going. So we know that we're going to be moving, hopefully soon, on camping, right? We know that we have at least eight months for this consultant that is being paid to bring all of these orgs together, and not every org in Topeka, but those that deal predominantly with the unsheltered. Okay? That first meeting's already happened. That could take up to eight months to come up with the plan. What we know right now is that we have unsheltered that we do not have a good number on, and I'm not talking part of the map. I'm talking those that are in the encampments, that are sleeping under, you know, in bushes and, you know, wherever. And so what we know is that the count had been 200 and some. It's probably higher than that. If, I don't know, it could be 400 to 500. Those point-in-time counts are never accurate. What we also know is that EAS has told us, we do not have enough housing. There is a waiting list for people. So if we said, okay, you know, let's move before we have the eight-month plan, down-the-road plan, let's move to get some of these folks housed, EAS is going to be short on funds, but we really don't know what the actual scope is because some of our partners in EAS aren't even being full partners with information, which is troublesome. And then there's still other entities, organizations around here that deal with the unsheltered, and I don't think EAS had those numbers yet. They're trying really, really hard. So, I mean, honestly, that $1 million was what weighed throughout months ago. That's what he threw out as a figure. And when the low-barrier shelter, and it came back and it was going to happen and blah, 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 and everybody's heads were spinning, you know, $1 million. And we've already heard what people think about the low-barrier shelter. But again, there's no plan. We know that we need to do something, but we're not going to know what we need to do right away. So there's all these different things that are happening, and there's no clear point. And so while I understand that, you know, if you have this $1 million set aside, everything absolutely should come before council for spending of that money. I don't know if this fund is actually the way to do it right now. I mean, I'm kind of leaning towards what, you know, Councilman Dobler said. I hope that the governing body does understand, I mean, as united as we can be, that we're going to have to put some money towards this. I just think it's going to be a while before we know that. And in the meantime, what's going to happen with the encampments, when we have this banning? So again, all of these moving parts. And I know that we still have tonight to talk about this, and then we have Tuesday, but I'm ambivalent, and I'm willing to hear more dialogue because I honestly, I don't know if this is going to work if we just shove a million dollars. We could be making this whole thing worse if we don't wait for a detailed plan. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Duncan?
Did Emerson have something before me?
Councilman Emerson.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I mean, I can't approve on what Deputy Mayor Dobler or Councilwoman Valdiviacola said. But I guess the only thing I would add is I'm also concerned frankly about creating a pull of homeless to Topeka. You know, I mean, we absolutely, you know, wanna have empathy for people who, you know, by the, by the grace of God, there go I, right? It can happen to any of us. But at the same time, the last thing I wanna, last thing I wanna be public is, hey, Topeka has a million dollars setting around. They, you know, they're giving out to people. Frankly, I think that could create a pull to Topeka. So, I, I also, I am not in favor of setting aside a million dollars in any way, shape, or form without, without a specific plan. But I can see even a little further. Sometimes I worry that, you know, even with EAS, you know, it's kind of the old adage, you know, you give a man a fish, you feed him for a day, but teach him to fish and you feed him for a lifetime. And I, I sometimes wonder, I guess I certainly hope that our programs are teaching people to fish instead of just feeding them for the day. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Duncan.
Okay. Last month, staff broached this idea with us. And the primary reason was we had already put in our budget a million dollars as proposed for the homelessness issue. It's my understanding that the creation of this fund, part of the rationale was because of statutory issues, state law, how the budgeting process works, this fund gives us flexibility on when and how we can spend that money, over what years, over what period, and how it's allocated and spent, which you don't have the same restriction with it's in the budget. When they brought that to us, we sort of gave them a general nod. Great, that makes sense because we might end up spending some of it this December, some of it next year, and some of it the year after. Because we don't know, as everyone has expressed here. I guess I'm, I guess so from that perspective, I guess I'll say from staff's point of view, they're kinda doing what we, where we guided them a little bit after they had asked for it. But I guess the second thing what I've heard tonight is if we're just not ready to set aside a million dollars, period, then maybe we're just not ready to set aside a million dollars, and we wanna put staff on notice that keep that million in reserves. And when the time comes, we can always pull it out of there and put it towards a homelessness fund as opposed to A, making them budget for something we have no idea if we're gonna spend or not, which has a huge impact on the budget, and B, putting it in some fund that none of us are comfortable spending. So, I guess I view it as we've sort of opened ourselves to many options at this point to get a road to have as we go. So, so I honestly don't know what to do. So, thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Hiller and then Councilwoman Kell.
Thank you. I guess what I looked at, and Councilwoman Valdiviacola mentioned, that our former city manager had identified that amount of money and kind of put it on the table. Staff tried to respond and get it in the budget. I guess what I thought was happening here was that by making the fund, we'd earmark it and get it out of the reserve and get it out of the operating budget so it could just kind of sit there. I had assumed, this conversation's been enlightening to me because as Councilwoman Valdiviacola said, the, the task force has just started to work. We approved spending money for that facilitator to come and help draw everybody together to come up with a master approach for our community on how we wanted to address homelessness. And that, if we all recall, got derailed. And then, we voted, we talked to the consultant and each other and brought that back to saying we wanna look at an overall plan. I don't think any of us know whether, what's, what's gonna come out of that and whether it's, whether, if we have everything we need already, we conclude, or whether for immediate services, we need more emergency bell beds for detox and some other ones at Valeo and other ones, you know, different places. That, that money is not enough to do monthly rent subsidies. That adds up so fast, it's dizzying. But I, I was, you know, at first anyway, to just kind of get it earmarked. I mean, another way that we could address that if people are concerned is to sunset, put a sunset in the, in the, the ordinance when we establish it, that if it's there if, if needed and with sunset at a certain point. A question that I had was about the time that million dollars started rolling around on our side. I believe it was Commissioner Cook who volunteered that he thought the county should earmark $6 million, particularly for mental health services. Has that advanced or solidified in some way? Does anybody know? I mean, they're over the mental health center and, and the jail, and that was really important to them. So, they were talking about earmarking some money as well. And I, I could see, I could see the idea of making the fund in that Councilman Dobler has done a really good job of saying, let's, let's reduce the reserves. But if it's something we thought we might need in the next year or two, just making sure we earmarked it made sense to me.
Councilman Kell, I already acknowledge. And then, Councilwoman Valdiviacola.
I get sometimes mixed reviews from people about where I kind of stand on this issue. Some people think I'm heartless. Some people think I'm over, over sympathetic. I'm a person that, that was on government assistance. I was on the verge of being homeless several times with my wife and daughters. But I, I know what it's like to fight to get back where you need to be. And that all starts with having a plan. And right now, we don't have a plan. We haven't really had a straight plan for a year or longer. It's with change of city manager and then upcoming change of city manager, upcoming change of council people, we're kind of going all different directions. I was against hiring the consultant when I felt we had partners here in town that could, who could do this. You know, we, we need to look at camping. We need to look at what the consultant brings us, what our partner organizations bring us, what's the fallout from like travelers in and the, and maybe some other places shutting down. We need to also look what's, what works for the city, for, for the city as a whole. Because it's, a lot of people sitting there saying, we're, we're just looking at, you know, let's say 500 people. But we have this whole city that, we have potholes. We have sidewalks. We have all these other issues that we have that we keep on passing over. And, you know, I've said before several times, I've talked to council people before I was even on, that if we get too comfortable with what, what's going on with homelessness, we're gonna turn into what some of these major cities like Portland have, where it's become a haven and a spot for the homeless to come because they know they're gonna get taken care of. You know, and without a plan, it's a million dollars. And that's just baffling to me to even think about a million dollars just sitting there with no plan on what to go, go about it. And as a person that sat there sometimes with $5 in their, in their bank account after payday, you gotta have a plan on what you're gonna do with every single cent to try to get yourself back out, up from, from being in that, in that position. And so, I just think throwing money into an accountant saying, here we go, we're, we're gonna do something with this. This plan can change very drastically in a year. And we could have just gone through a million dollars, and now we're switching directions again. And like I said, we don't have things set up like what the consultant comes up with, what our new city manager's gonna wanna do, what our new council people are gonna wanna do. It, it's scary to sit there and think just, we're gonna put a million dollars aside and, and without a plan.
Okay, then?
Yes.
Okay. Councilwoman Valdiviacola, and then I think Deputy Mayor. But before Deputy Mayor, I'd like to make some comment as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. So, a, a couple of things is, and I know I'm intentionally repeating myself here. Eight months. And I know Councilwoman Hiller asked, you know, where the county is on the $6 million. I don't think there's been a final vote on that. I do know that Brian Cole with the jail is on that advance team. I do know that there's one other representative on that advance team. You know, you're talking about the jail that's making, creating 100 more beds for seriously and chronically mentally ill, right? So, that's gonna include some of the unsheltered folks most likely. Him and I have had a dialogue on this. But the other thing is that we just, eight months seems like a really, really long time. And it does. But if we think about what we can do to break down these silos to see, to make sure we're not duplicating services, to make sure we're not doing what council, you know, what I think the majority of us don't want is to be that beacon, and which I'm so glad that, you know, no-tow businesses and other businesses said, wait, stop, you know, timeout, timeout. We have to put the brakes on this. And no-tow business, there's a no-tow business person that's also on this core team, which is going to be major. And, and so, I'm, I would support, you know, maybe a sunset. I would support any ideas, which I think Council, Councilman Dobler, you know, may be on a similar train of thought as I am. I know that Councilman Duncan is saying, you know, there's some concern. But I just think that putting a $1 million and then thinking that we have that in there, like this rush to do something with it before we even know what we're doing. But I like where the conversation's going on, let's think of something else. Or, or understanding that we're gonna have to do something, we just don't know when. So, that's, that's all. Thank you, Mayor.
Deputy Mayor, go ahead. No, wait until after you're done.
Okay, thanks, Mayor. Real quick, first of all, City Manager, I appreciate, and Amanda, I appreciate what, what you're trying to do. You have a passion for trying to find something to address the issue. I just think maybe we're not quite there yet. I have a tough time doing the math. If I read this memo and based on what Finance said, we're gonna have 20, 20-some million. Maybe we're adding another 5 and 1/2 million. Maybe we're down to 22% reserves. I think the bottom line is at the end of the year, we will undoubtedly have at least $2 to $3 million that we're gonna, in excess of everything we've planned. And if we have a plan at that time or even going into next year, those funds will be available. So, I don't, I don't think we need to rush into this. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Duncan.
I just have one question so we all know. I guess if we don't take action on this, nothing happens. If we vote it down, what are our ordinance, charter ordinance rules on what happens to this idea if we?
That is a great question. So, just doing math and counting months on my fingers, March, eight months gets you about to March. So, if you did nothing, end of the year comes, you don't allocate money. In March, you decide you suddenly need money for homelessness. You would have to find that from somewhere. There's always place normally to do that, but you would have to find that. You could take an action tonight and motion, make a motion to defer this to the first meeting in December and see where you're at with the plan and look at it then. Just do nothing and it would just, nothing would happen to it. If you voted it down, it couldn't be reconsidered for, I believe, four months. So, if you needed it again later, it would be after the end of the year. Just figure out if it's four or six, but I think it's four now.
I think we changed it to four when we made that change last year after COVID.
And so, so you have a couple of options. You could make a motion to defer it, just to leave it on the table somewhere if you need it in December. You could take no action, and it would just hang out there for a while.
Okay, great. I just wanna make sure we all knew what, step one led to what or step two?
City Manager.
So, my answer, my, my question, my answer to Councilman Duncan was, it will be, well, I'd come talk to you about it every time we had a meeting, but.
We don't allow that.
But, but here's the important thing. It really doesn't matter about the dollars. Million dollars is just something that's been thrown around. Whether it's a million, whether it's 500,000, whether it's 250, whether it's 100,000, here's what I know looking down the road for you. You will deal more and more with homeless issues. And how you deal with them, you're going to need money to do that. And you may not always have as healthy a budget or as healthy a cash reserve as what you have now to deal with things. So, what I'm suggesting to you is that any amount set aside of which you control, you at least have something there when the day comes that you come out of this study and you have some strategies you need to fund, or you have another strategy that's been developed in-house that needs funding, or some other nonprofit has it.
Councilwoman Hiller.
Question for Finance. And with the long weekend and no Monday, I didn't send it to you today, but maybe we need to ask it anyway. Of the money that you've identified that you're expecting to be excess revenue over expenses at the end of this year, if I heard you right, the cap that we just voted on for the budget was you all lowered that after you pulled the million dollars out of the operating budget on the assumption that we were gonna put it in a fund and take it out of the year-end money. What else is, is, is anything else already pre-obligated somewhere out of that year-end money?
No.
No? Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Councilwoman Valdiviacola.
Thank you, Mayor. City Attorney, can you tell me what the difference is between deferring and tabling? Is there, is that just a nuance?
Yes, that is a nuance. Defer means to table it for six months, so that's a nuance. The difference is in your rules of order in 6.3F. If you take action on it, you cannot make a motion to adopt or rescind the previous action for four months. So, you can table or defer something for six months. But if you take an action and vote it down, you can't reconsider that for four.
Councilman Duncan.
We can also just, no one makes a motion and no one takes action, and then we've not handicapped ourselves in one bit until December gets here and we go from there, correct? I mean, that's, just because it's an action item doesn't mean we actually have to take action, right?
But at least you had the pre-discussion.
No, that's, I just wanna make sure. Again, I'm worried about not handicapping ourselves with timelines because of our ordinances and rules and boxing ourselves in and losing any flexibility before the end of the year.
You don't have to make a decision on this tonight. No way am I suggesting that. I just want you to wrap your heads around it as we go through the end of the year. And coupled with this, did we develop a list of one-time expenditures that the council asked for sometime back?
Yeah, so we have a list of capital projects that would be geo-bonded that we can.
And what's the dollar amount on those?
Well above $15 million with our HVAC parking.
So, you're not gonna make a decision tonight. But just looking down the road as we go through this, you need to just be kind of wrapping your head around it. And if you do nothing, that's not wrong either. It depends upon the faith you have in 2024 and where we're going with all this.
Thank you, City Manager. If I may take my turn now. I don't want anyone to get the impression, either the governing body or the public, that this is something that has to happen tonight. Because obviously, listening to the discussion here, there's a lot of concern about a plan. And from my perspective, from listening to all the suggestions that have been made, there is always gonna be somebody else's plan that we're gonna look at. I am not comfortable with the suggestion that we have to wait eight months to take any kind of action. It is my opinion that we have to take action every opportunity we have between now and whenever that contract is fulfilled. We can do while we're planning, and I think that's important for us to consider. And to do that, you have to have monies available. I like the idea that the governing body wants to hear what those actions are. And I think City Manager will be very good at bringing it to the governing body as to this is what we've identified and this is what we can take action on now and not in two, four, six, eight months. Because in three months, cold weather's gonna be here. And we're, and the situation will change, and we'll be reacting. We need to act as a body to prepare ourselves for what is a growing issue and understand that planning is essential, but doing is more essential. We have to get ourselves of the mind that as a body, we have found a course of action we're going to take regardless of any consultant's suggestions. I've said from the beginning, I believe the solutions come from this body and from this community and not. and from this community and not necessarily from a facilitator. I've never looked for for that facilitator to come to us with a plan that we will then, I know, have issue with in one way or another and will end up doing what we still feel best for the community. So my encouragement, and I kind of like what Councilman Duncan just said. If we don't tie ourselves into any action tonight, this can always come to us at another time. Because I know every one of us will have some thought or idea as to what can be done now. And that's what I'm asking for, is this governing body to consider acting while we're planning and not waiting for just the plan. Councilwoman Vadivialkola?
Thank you, Mayor. With all due respect, Mayor, since you're not voting, I want to just make sure that you're you're allowed to be in the conversation. I say that with all due respect. Yeah, and so I'm wanting to know if City Attorney could check that. The other and and while she's checking, the other thing that I just want to say is, and maybe this is covering my butt, but I never wanted the consultant, but yet I voted because I was trying to, I don't know, have a kumbaya moment, just trying to say, hey, okay, I'll go along with the party and, you know, and and vote for it on something that I've been, you know, clanging the bell about for three and a half years. So, you know, and now it's it and I and I've never ever said, and I and I know you weren't referring specifically to me. I never ever said that nothing can be done outside of the plan. And I will also say that that consultant firm, which is Bloomberg, Harvard, whatever that is, I don't know what that's all about. But she's not making the plan and she said that specifically. It's going to be the organizations, the Topeka organizations that guide this. And that's specifically what she said in her meeting. So it's going to be a Topeka plan. And so when you say that, when there's dialogue that says this, you know, the months are coming up, we should have this money. No matter if the mayor says that, no matter if Councilman Dobler would say that, no matter if Councilman, you know, Councilwoman Hiller would say that, whatever, like some kind of kind of warning shot, it makes me think, well, what is it that we're not talking about that that we should be worried about right now? I know you said cold weather. Well, then let's be talking about that instead of us alluding to things because I'm concerned, and maybe it's because I'm too knee deep in it. I'm just concerned that we're going to be all over the place. But if we need that money because winter's coming or whatever, then we need to be talking about that. And I don't know if there's behind the scene conversations going on. I know that happens all the time, but I'm just in a in a totally confused state over this dialogue right now. But I just want to make sure it's not it's not being disrespectful to you, Mayor, but I want to I want to understand what the rules are, uh, City Attorney.
Yes, the mayor is able to participate in discussions. While he doesn't have a vote, he does have a veto right and all members of the governing body are allowed to speak.
And I want to restate a couple of things. I heard tonight discussions saying, uh, we've had potholes and other things like that and we're just not doing anything about it. I disagree with that. I push back on that. We have staff that has done a really good job. Public Works has done a really good job about that. We don't need to say that we're not taking action because we are taking action. I don't want the public to get the idea that we're just sitting around talking about it. There are no but behind, well, I'm trying to talk and address about it, but there are no behind the scenes conversations or siloed conversations going on that I've been a part of. I'm just saying the be practical. We know that we will have the same issues that we had last summer and last winter. It's not a warning shot. It's a practical fact of this state of Kansas and the change in the weather. And if the numbers are still what they are, we will have to address that homeless issue at that time. And be having the capacity to do that is what I'm asking the governing body to consider. And whether I have a vote or not, I have an opinion just like everyone else on this council. So we'll move it along, hopefully, to the next item unless there is a motion on this particular item. And no one's I haven't taken one from anyone. Okay? No motion, we'll move on to public comment. For public comment, I have a number of people signed up. I will call them in the order they will receive. Uh, Cory Chandler. Okay, I've been advised he's not here. 420 Jim. 420 Jim. Okay. Paul Lastly. Paul Lastly, please come forward, sir. Sir, have you appeared before us before?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so you know the rules as far as you have a four-minute time limit and the red light tells you when your time is up. A yellow light tells you you have one minute left. If you get to the point where you think you may need more time than you're given, then you can ask for it. Okay, proceed when you're ready.
I I think that, um, commenting on the on the homeless thing, I firmly believe being homeless once myself that if some kind of work program for all of them is not mandatory, it'll never work. Other than that, my my problem is with this mobile home park. I know that they said they weren't going to retaliate, but they raised the rent. You know, they didn't, uh, they didn't address any issues whatsoever that we have. They just every time they turn around, they just raise the rent. It's the second time the rate rents have been raised and they've accomplished nothing. They did fill some chuck holes. They're doing a lot of cleanup that needed to be done four years ago. Four years ago when this was started, not not a whole lot's changed. And I think the the biggest issue with me is that in the beginning, four years ago, I spent $1,800 to get my roof fixed because of the bad trees. I did the same thing last month, only it was 2,500, almost 24 something, $100 for the same thing. Everybody, they come out there cold compliance. I know co-compliance is important, but it's like, it's like the narrative is all about co-compliance. 411 charges of code compliance, uh, needs to be addressed. The trees are the deadliest. The trees have cost me a lot of money and are very, very dangerous and should be the primary concern of what happens in that court. And there's no way for anybody to make them do anything because they know all the tricks. They know how to avoid everything they've been doing for four years and they're going to do it some more, you know? And it's going to keep on doing. This time, the the storm, I thought, would be more of an impetus to correct something because of how serious it was. And I mean, it's not easy to sit there and watch limbs come down, you know? And it could have been a lot worse. And if they don't do something, it will be. Now, I found out that somebody's tree in your in the next yard over, if it hangs over your your property, you're responsible for cutting that down. They're not. That's stupid. On the other hand, I I've got five trees, three of them of which are on the lot that the house that I own. The other two are on the other side and they they're not hanging over anything. But when the wind catches them, it's they don't have the right conception of overgrown. Overgrown means that they can't be trimmed anymore. They need to be come down to a certain height. There needs to be a regulation that says anything in between trailers. There should never have been a tree in between a trailer, especially a elm or a soft maple. And it's just aggravating that people don't put the priorities right. You know, it's not overgrown, they're dangerous and half of them are dead, you know? They don't have to remove one single tree. Just get them down where they're supposed to be so that they're not dangerous and deadly. That's, you know, all 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 that other stuff, that's not going to kill me, you know? The the roads being bad, you know, the sewers being plugged up, the the lots things sinking because of the high water level. That's not going to kill me. The trees are going to kill me. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Lloyd Schroder? Lloyd Schroder? And did someone say that the 420 Jim stepped out? Did he step back in? Okay, I've called his name more than once. Uh, we'll move on from public comment. And we'll go to announcements. Uh, Madam Clerk?
For the September 12 agenda, there will be two proclamations. We have a noise exception and a professional services contract on the consent agenda. Action items include a public hearing and ordinance for a vacation for Helping Hands Humane Society subdivision located at 2625 Northwest Rochester Road. We also have another public hearing and ordinance for Clay Sherwood Rentals located Southwest Sixth Avenue and Harrison Street. We have a final plat for Elk Lake Shawnee subdivision located at 3440 Southeast 29th Street. We will have the appropriation ordinance for the budget and then we'll have discussion and possible action on the unlawful camping ordinances. Discussion items include the STO and the UPOC.
Thank you, Brenda. City Manager?
I've been asked to read this announcement. Half a page. On October 12, 2023, from 8:30 AM to 2 PM, at the historical great Overland Park, Overland, sorry, Overland Station, the Kansas Association of Public Purchasing Professionals will host a reverse vendor fair. The city of Topeka is a primary partner in this event and this will give vendors an opportunity to meet with different government agencies to promote their products or services and to register in their respective systems to get notified of bid opportunities.
That's it? Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Vadivialkola?
Nothing tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I want to shout out a happy 94th birthday to Raul Gomez and a happy 93rd birthday to Ms. Juanita Fisher. And I tell you what, them people in their 90s, they they know how to party. I had some 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 good drinks. I also wanted to congratulate Sid on their net first net zero house. It was really, really awesome. Me and Tony toured it on Tuesday, I believe, asked all the questions. But, um, it's it's amazing and we look for good more to come. And I wanted to thank Council Councilman Spencer Duncan and Councilwoman Karen Hiller for coming as well. It just shows what partnerships with, um, K-State and other universities can do. And, um, I look for more. Those whoever the owner is will have a bill for three months. And that's it. It's all electric. That's amazing. And of course, they'll have their their water bill. Having said that, we did talk about when we raised the rates for the water bill. There was a program, um, a rebate for the water. And City Manager, if you can check on that. I know that the former City Manager had put some things together. And one of the things that he was trying to mirror off of was LEAP, which I said I would support it as long as we didn't mirror off of everything on LEAP. So if you can check that and let me know, that'd be great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Emerson?
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry, it wasn't unmuting. First of all, we're talking about birthdays. A happy belated birthday to Councilwoman Ortiz. And I'm sure my invitation must have got lost in the mail. Also, uh, this week is Hana Park's, uh, homecoming week. So just wish them all the best and I wish the the cat as well. So thanks, everyone.
Thanks, sir. Councilman Kell?
So this this month, it happens to be a lot of medical issue months. And the reason I bring that up is this last weekend I was in Iowa City, Iowa, Iowa Hawkeyes game. And a couple of years ago, they started a tradition of waving to the Children's Hospital that's right behind the stadium. And at the end of the first quarter, they bring all the kids up that can from the hospital up to the top floor so they can see and wave at them. And that was an amazing experience. But it's childhood cancer month, blood cancer month, sickle cell month. So, uh, look at different programs that you might be able to help. Ones that you've been affected by, your family's been affected by or or just causes that you feel passionate about. And look to see how you can help these, especially when it comes to children that have to fight through medical issues. I have two daughters that have to fight through medical issues all the time. But it's it's that's the hardest people to look at and know that sometimes you can't help them no matter what they're going through. But if you can give your time, your money, effort to those organizations, try to help find some cures for some of these issues. We won't have to have a tradition like a hospital wave, but it was an amazing thing to be a part of and it and it made me cry at the end because of all the years I've done this with my daughters. So thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Councilwoman Nager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am just here to go ahead and remind everybody that this weekend is the 48th Annual, um, Topeka Huff and Puff. City Manager, this is good for you to know. This is Topeka tradition. Huff and Puff is going to be at its regular place. And yes, I've made a sign. It's this weekend, September 8th through 10th. And weather permitting, on the evening of the 8th, which is Friday, the morning and evening of Saturday and the morning of Sunday, which is the 10th, there will be, um, up to 20 balloons getting going at, um, Mount Hope Cemetery's balloon field. And so that's going to be at Fair Lawn in Huntune. If you want to find out more, you can go to huff-in-puff.org or you can just Google Huff and Puff dot com. I mean Huff and Puff, um, Topeka. So just, we're not trying to be full of hot air, but they are this weekend. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Deputy Mayor? Councilman Duncan?
Uh, just briefly, I want to give a big, big, big shout out to our water department. This past weekend was not fun for many of them and it's probably carrying into this week also. We had tens of thousands of Topequans who experienced little to no water problems solely because we had city staff working their you-know-what's off, pulling extra hours and time through tough weather and holidays to make sure that all the different issues they were dealing with. People didn't experience those disruptions. So just wanted to say thank you to all of them for giving up their holiday weekends to get out there and and help the people at Topeka. So thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Hofer? Okay, on my announcements, I want to make sure that. Oh, I'm sorry. Councilwoman Hiller?
Thank you, Mayor.
I've called on you enough times this evening.
I know, I were on my count. I'm glad that Councilwoman Ortiz mentioned the net zero house. That was totally impressive. And I just want to shout out to Cent, the design that they're using, the quality that they're doing, the imagination. And and driving that is that they're not stuck in just looking at the city for what programs we have. They're looking at what would make a difference in their neighborhood, what would make a difference for the people who live there and going out and finding partners like the professor in the classic K-State, like the solar people who put the roof in, the people that did the windows and so many people in the neighborhood. and so many people in the neighborhood. And they're continuing to do that, and I, I just... I'm so impressed with that and hopeful for that with all of our neighborhoods. I think they're doing a good role model as well, so shout out to them. Also, regarding the water utility money, I asked pretty early about that. It is in our budget this year. I guess that's one of the reasons I thought we were already doing extra things for, for the people that are, are challenged by the water rates and so on. But I, my understanding from staff is that it's in there. And last, I just wanted to make a request. I'm not quite sure who it goes to, maybe Richard, maybe Brenda, but some of the items that we had on the agenda today, for instance, we didn't get information until like Friday, or they got added to the agenda on Thursday. And the council spent a lot of time doing the council rules, saying that anything that is going to be on the agenda should be on the preliminary agenda two weeks out with its attachments, so that there was that week, that kind of soft week up front. If somebody was trying to do their due diligence, or it was about something they knew about, they had time to do some checking or whatever. When we see something brand new on Thursday or Friday or Monday, there's not enough time for us as council members to research it, or often, people can be busy this weekend. We had holidays and a Monday off. So things that arrived on Thursday or Friday, there wasn't time to, to handle properly. So I would encourage that we get back to that, and even the mention that the camping ordinance is supposed to be on for discussion and possible action. Had we put the, the homeless million dollars, which we've never talked about as a council, on a discussion-only item, which is what we had decided to do as a kind of a culture thing, whenever it was a new issue that might have some discussion and opinion and might need some work, it would have, we wouldn't have had to have the discussion that we did today. And I hope that the camping ordinance, since we haven't seen it yet, it wasn't on last week, would not be on for a possible vote. It's a big deal, and we've all looked at it a long time and don't know what it's going to say. So I hope we can get back to that two weeks out and then final agenda. Thank you.
Okay, for my announcements, I want to acknowledge that Director Copley... that Director Copley has been chosen and selected to participate in the Bloomberg Harvard City Lab program and will be joining others to discover replicable solutions to pressing issues and focus on empowering local leaders to deliver our infrastructure ambitions. And this is a competitive program. People have to apply and be sponsored in. And I'm pleased that Braxton, Braxton will be representing the city of Topeka in this program, so I think that's an accomplishment. Anytime we have our staff that are able to participate in these kinds of programs, we should give them that acknowledgement. Also, Pernester De La Rosa has been nominated to serve on the Welcoming America Board of Directors. It's a nonprofit, nonpartisan organization that leads a movement of inclusive communities becoming more prosperous by ensuring everyone belongs. And again, I think that that's something to note, that City of Topeka, their staff, our staff is being acknowledged for their skills and abilities, and I appreciate that they've agreed to attend to these programs. So that has, that's the end of our announcements. And all of those who were present at, at the time they were called were given an opportunity to speak. No further, no further discussion. Our business is coming before this body. This meeting is adjourned.